We call this meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to order on this fifth day of March 2012. I'd like to welcome all of our guests, my colleagues here. And Mr. Hoyle is going to be delivering the invitation today, so if you will remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we appeal to you to forgive us of our sins and our human shortcomings, and with thy grace to guide and sustain us as we seek to do thy will. Bless the members of the Lee County Board of Commissioners and all who hold positions of authority, and make them worthy stewards of the welfare of thy people by giving them clarity of thought, even in less temper, and a willing to persevere in your service. Comfort we ask you that you take care of those who mourn and protect them that are at risk because of illness, war, weather, or calamity. Bind us together in concord and peace, and help us in our varied ways to find thee and to serve thee, for we ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a different county manager sitting up here today. Lisa as the Assistant County Manager is coming in. Mr. Compton is up in Washington DC at the NAICO conference. And Mr. Pascal is participating via conference call. You still there, Ed?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And first on the agenda, are there any additions or deductions from today's agenda?
Chairman, item 5C needs to be deleted. Ms. Barber is unable to be here today due to sickness.
Okay, remove item 5C from new business. Any other changes?
Madam Chair, if you give me a moment to find my other set of eyes, I'll be right with you. Looking at under, I believe it is new business. Item F. I feel that this particular item, quite frankly, I'd rather see both F and G. I can live with G. I'd like to see item F delayed or transferred to our budget workshop.
Okay, is that a motion then to, I guess that's...
Well, I would like to offer the opportunity for the speaker to have the motion to move it.
Mr. Walmick, that was your item that you added to.
Madam Chair, I would prefer not to move it to the budget workshop. I certainly think it can be added to the agenda at the budget workshop, but I wanted to go ahead and have an introduction of that item today so that we would have ample time on the part of all commissioners to be able to respond back, because this is not a discussion item for tonight other than to introduce the topic. We are running out of time to be able to provide the county manager with advance planning guidance. If we don't initiate the process tonight, I fear that waiting or delaying the invitation for the other commissioners to provide their inputs may be, you know, causing them to not be having enough time to think them through. So I would like to leave it on the agenda and make the discussion brief, just to make sure that everyone understands what the suggestion was. And then, we don't need to belabor it at all tonight, just to get it out there and then have everyone have some time to think it over.
My request is now a motion.
Okay, a motion has been made to remove item F from new business. Is there any further discussion?
I have a couple of comments. One, I don't think that item should be introduced here today in the absence of the man that we hired to do the job, which is planning the budget. Any recommendations that any commissioner wants to offer can always be done anytime, any point in time, up to and including the budget process itself. We went through, I think, what was it, line item last year? And we wound up adding $165,000 to the budget. So it goes to show, this preliminary, I'm not opposed to it. I'm not opposed to it being on the agenda, this agenda or any other agenda. What I oppose is not having the individual responsible for the duties, not being present to defend his positions, or challenge or question. And that's an unfair predicament to place the manager in, when in fact, most of the commissioners have been through the process before.
Madam Chair, if I might add, that this is not putting the county manager in any kind of predicament. The county manager wasn't even expected to participate in the conversation today. The only thing we were trying to do is to initiate the process for gathering inputs for advanced planning guidance for the county manager. He would not even be expected to respond today.
If I ask him a question, I expect him to respond. So if he's here, he can do that.
If we end up with questions, then we should present those questions to the county manager. There's no reason not to initiate a process for gathering information.
There's no reason to advance it.
Well, certainly there is. If we're going to do advanced planning guidance, it won't be advanced if we don't start the process. It'll be delayed.
Are we starting Thursday, the budget process?
I have a question.
Oh, we're starting Thursday, let me get that.
That is our budget work retreat, yes.
I have a comment as well.
I just have a question, Lisa. When do we, if we made a decision on changing the taxes, what is the date, the last date that we can do that on?
June 30th.
What date is that?
No, I mean, to the, the state requires us, if we moved an ad valorem tax, when do we have?
Excuse me, I thought you were referring to property taxes, so we're talking budget. Sales tax, we have to notify them before April 30th.
Well, April 30th, so we actually have two more meetings before, three, three more meetings, okay.
Mr. Hayes?
I'd like to say that I'm very satisfied with the process that we go through. I think we are well-prepared, and I believe this is unnecessary and even inappropriate, so I'll just put that exclamation to it. I hope we can go ahead and vote on it now.
Any further discussion?
Well, before we vote, Madam Chair, because I can see where this is headed, I would just like to make it known to the public that the reason that we added the agenda item for today was so that we could provide, as stewards of your tax dollars, the opportunity to provide the county manager in advance of his budget development, some advanced planning guidance, and to solicit from the commissioners over a period of two weeks, their inputs, so that we could deliberate those advanced planning guidance, and then provide them to the county manager, much the way that corporate, corporations do planning, much the way that the military does planning. This was just a simple way to discipline the process, so that we're not reactionary when the county manager delivers a budget to us in April or May, and then having to squirm around to try to make adjustments. This was just a way of ordering the process, of helping to provide front-end guidance to the county manager. Now, it's clear that there are those on the board that are not interested in having that discussion, that want to see us doing business as usual with your tax dollars. And I'm just saying that, you know, one of these days, this county will wake up and we will be more deliberate in our planning, and doing things with a lot more forethought, rather than being reactionary at the end of the budget cycle. And that's all I'm trying to do. If we don't want to talk about it today...
Madam Chair, what is our meeting, March the 8th, about? I'm looking at it, it says budget work session. That's when we can discuss anything we need to discuss.
Okay, let's call for a vote on this. A motion has been made to remove item F from new business. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Ed, how'd you vote on that one?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so...
With a group.
The four ayes have it, item F is removed from the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me say that that wasn't the intent. It is only fair that any staff person that we intend to discuss their position, any matter related to the position, ought to be available to respond to the board members if questions arise, not later on.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended with items C and F off of new business?
There can be.
C and F for F and D.
No, just yeah. C, because Ms. Barber is ill, and...
Madam Chair, before we go any further, let me ask Commissioner Walmick about G. Tell us a little more about the intent.
Well, it's in the read-ahead from your package, but if you need me to tell us what's beyond that? Well, the intent was just to simply introduce the notion that the county ought to begin thinking in advance of any change in Senate energy policy, or the state's energy policy, that we should begin contemplating the sheer breadth and depth of impact on the county that the shale gas industry will have, and that we need to start beginning now to organize to deal with those issues and challenges as they come up. We have three or four different committees or subcommittees that are standing now today that are dealing with the shale gas industry question and topics, but we don't have a comprehensive advisory board that can address and synthesize all of those issues across the board. And what I'm trying to do is to follow the best practice of several other counties that have put in place a comprehensive advisory board to address those issues, so that the shale gas development in this county doesn't become the dominant topic of the Board of Commissioner meetings, so we don't get anything else done but talk about shale gas. That's what's happened in some other counties, and they've dealt with it by standing up a comprehensive advisory board to address those issues. And I just wanted to introduce that discussion tonight, and have commissioners think about what we, you know, who we might want to have serve on that board, who the stakeholders are, and how they would then lash up with some of the other advisory boards and committees we already have in the county.
Could this be considered that discussion, and so have we dealt with it already?
No, I mean, I don't think so. It's just introducing what the topic is. I think we need to spend a few minutes talking about it tonight, and then go back and... Are you okay with that?
Well, the discussion includes a list of the committees that have already been formed for Lee County, combined list of all, you know, there's several different factions taking a look at it. And now we're talking about adding another group in advance of knowing who we already have, who the players are.
Well, Commissioner Reeves, why don't we wait and discuss that at the time it's on the agenda, instead of discussing it now, when we're trying to decide on the agenda?
Because the last time I checked, I had to write the question.
Sure, you do, but I mean...
And that's what I...
We can belabor the agenda approval, and talk about it right now, and do the whole thing right now, if you want to.
I'm fine. Your call.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as adjusted.
Okay, motion's been made to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I'll give the nays. Commissioner Hayes, how'd you vote, Ed?
Aye, aye, aye.
Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the only one I can hear on this board, the rest I'm going to break it up.
Okay, well, anytime you need to have me repeat something, just make sure you ask, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hey, Ed, starting from experience, you're going to get that all the way through, so you'll need to ask.
Okay, thank you, Charlie.
Okay, now I have that at six to one, is that what you have? Okay, now I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I have one question on the consent agenda. This is for Kyle, he's here. Was DDI amenable to moving that date? Okay, I have no problem with it. I move that we consent it to.
I have a question, just a comment, and otherwise, I'm happy with it. Item E, which is the extension of banking services with First Citizens Bank, I just wanted to go on record just to say that I'd like to see this opened up next year to determine after six years if this remains the best value for Lee County. We've extended it and extended, and I understand that, but I think it's time we sort of rounded, circled the wagons, and looked at the whole array of opportunities again. Thank you.
That is our intentions.
I know.
Okay, and Duane, I have just one question for you. The 2011 tax lien advertisement, those are, what is the date of that? The names of properties that appear on there, as of what?
We ran the report as of February 23rd. So anyone to link on February 23rd, their name will be advertised in the paper. The advertisement, I believe, is March 13th, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so it will be in the paper on March 13th?
I believe that's the correct date. Next week, next Tuesday, I believe it is.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Unanimous. Next item on the agenda, public comments, we have one individual, Mr. Clark.
Mr. Clark, 211 Akron Drive, Sanford, North Carolina. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to read at this time the First Amendment to the United States Constitution. Congress shall make no law respecting and abridgement of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or of the people, cumulatively assembled, and to petition the government for the redress of grievances. I want to determine how sincere people are in their oaths to defend the Constitution, and in the belief in this document. Dr. Lawrence from the School of Government, so highly prized as a source of legal advice by one of our commissioners, has said that protection from public criticism is clearly not available for elected board members themselves. As a practical matter, if someone wishes to complain to board about its actions, or one of its members, the only place where the concern may be raised publicly in front of the entire body is during the public comment period. Such comments are the heart of political speech that is protected by the First Amendment's guarantee of freedom in speech. Now, I would like to simply say that the public needs to understand that the purpose of this planning guidance is a reflection of what we already know. There is a commissioner who has publicly disclosed his intention to remove the county manager when he receives a fifth vote on this board. Now, it should be clear that the county manager is this county's budget officer. This is an attempt to restructure that value for political purposes. The public should be clear that the reference vaguely made to what about a change to ad valorem taxes involves a desired change on the part of some members of this board, who normally vote, three against me, when I try to use my right in your rules to discuss things with you, to change the method of tax, sales distribution in this county to be able to reduce the county's tax rate by 2% by removing $1.3 million from the county city's budget receipts from tax dollars, which would require a 7% there. One should be aware that we have an advisory advisory board, Environmental Advisory Board, which is perfectly capable of bringing up and pulling together these groups. I'm disturbed, as a conservative, when what we have people who want to do is to create a process that they can simply dominate. I also know that the government has lost its trust. I have documented that a commissioner misled this group and the public...
Madam Chair, the three minutes are up.
...regarding his role in redistricting.
Okay, old business, first item, recommendation from Planning Board regarding the February 20th public hearing. I'll take it.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners. On February 20th, the Planning Board and Board of Commissioners held a public hearing to consider an application by Mr. Albert Tahoe to rezone the possibly five acres of land at 3132 Jefferson Davis Highway to Highway Commercial. The Planning Board by unanimous vote recommends that Board of Commissioners rezone this property to Highway Commercial as presented in the application.
Madam Chair, I have a motion.
Okay.
To, as the...
Accept the recommendation.
Accept the recommendation of the Planning Board.
Okay, motion's been made to accept the unanimous vote of the Planning Board to rezone this particular property. Is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
In the initial sheet there, it says for car sales, car repair, and things like that. And all of us have seen these car things where they're scattered all over, and you get all kinds of junker cars sitting around. We had one citizen that, you know, came before us and said, they didn't mind it being there, but they didn't want their property devalued. Do we have codes in place to where those cars being repaired or put behind a fence, or something like that, so as not to devalue somebody else's property?
Yes, we do, and actually, junk yards, as it is listed, are not allowed in the Highway Commercial District, and we will be monitoring...
Sometimes it can become a junkyard without meeting the criteria.
That's correct. We will be monitoring the use of that replaced area.
Okay, yes.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Duane Wrenson, Discuss Reference Citizen 2013 Revaluation Officer Program. This is page 31 of your agenda packs.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm going to speak to you today without a PowerPoint presentation. Should be interesting. As you know, we're out in the community discussing the 2013 revaluation. It's going to be a big, big project. It's going to have a tremendous impact in the county, whether property values decline or increase, it's going to have an impact. So we have, we divided the revaluation process up into three different phases. First, we have an introductory phase. We've already been to the enrichment center, we've already been to the chamber meeting, we've conducted, we've created a YouTube video regarding just an introduction to the revow process. The second phase is going to be about the schedule of values. What does the schedule of values mean to the public? And lastly, we're going to go in and create a video, do presentations on the appeal process. How do I prepare myself for an appeal? What's involved in an appeal? And, you know, have those three phases of our public relations campaign. What we want to do is, people are already going to our presentations, our community presentations, they are, we've had a couple hundred views of our YouTube videos. So people are looking at our videos, going to our presentations, and learning this material. We want to create something along the lines of a public-private partnership, a P3. This program goes towards that. So I'm providing this to the board for additional input, consideration, but what we want to do, and I've titled it Citizen 2013 Revaluation Officer. For those people that go to each one of our presentations, or those people that watch each phase on YouTube, or whatever means they have, after each phase, they will take a short quiz, a five or 10-question quiz, that's covered in the YouTube video, that's covered in the presentation. They pass that quiz for each of the three phases, and at the end of the revaluation process in December, they would be coined a Citizen 2013 Revaluation Officer. So of the three phases, they'd have to get all the questions right, they'd have to be knowledgeable, they'd have to know what the tax office was presenting. These people are already going to be out in the community talking about the revaluation anyways. So I'd love to have our role to come in and educate them more. The benefits I see with this program is that it's a credential for local businesses and real estate professions. The lawyers, the realtors, those people are going to be bombarded with questions from the public. So if we can get those people to our presentations, or to have them watch our YouTube videos, take the short quiz, and make sure they know the essential components of the revow. At the end of the day, it's another credential for them, and they can say, hey, I know quite a bit about a 2013 revow. The second thing is, it's an opportunity for the public to become involved in county government. We have a lot of citizens' boards, we have a lot of people that want to become more involved in county government, and by participating in these presentations, by watching our YouTube videos, learning about the revaluation, it's an opportunity to become even more involved. Third thing, it creates more agents in the field for the tax office. We have three appraisers, we have an appraisal manager, we have myself, and we've got 60,000 citizens. So if we can capitalize on some of those knowledgeable citizens, educate them, get them out in the community with accurate information, let them know what's happening in this revaluation, keep them abreast, then that's going to create more knowledgeable agents for us. The last thing, that's going to help us ensure a good quality revaluation. There's information out there that we don't have. A lot of property owners, they have better information about their houses than we do. They have better information about market sales than we do. So by involving them in this process, helping them become a Citizen 2013 Revaluation Officer, we can get better information, we can have a better revaluation. So what we want to do is offer this program as an option to the public, and we define public as anybody outside of the tax office. So offer it to the public, capitalize on these P3s, public-private partnership, and I think that will move us forward in having even more success in this revaluation. I'd be happy to entertain any questions the board might have about this idea.
Duane, I'd like to commend you for having some forethought doing that, because I'm already getting questions about how this is going to work, and, you know, what's the impact, and all that kind of thing. Sounds like this might help alleviate some of those questions, or maybe give us all, we may need to go take, so. Anyway, I'd like to commend you for your forethought in doing that.
And my thinking is that we're already doing this, it's not anything extra. We're already going to be out in the community presenting, we're already going to do these YouTube videos. So why not offer something back to our business people, our citizens, and have them help us while we're helping them also?
When will these quizzes be available?
We actually have not developed quizzes yet. I wanted to get more input from the board and the public, maybe. We've jotted down a few questions, but, you know, anywhere from five to 10 questions on each phase. Our introductory phase is pretty much complete. We presented it two or three times in person, we have it on our YouTube channel, so the next thing would be explaining the schedule of values, what that means to the average taxpayer citizen of Lee County. And then, of course, we're going to go in, I've never heard of this before, and it's a little scary thinking of it, but at the end, in December, November, we're going to go in and help taxpayers prepare for the appeal process. Now, that's going to help us too, because they're going to have to educate themselves on what the market value of their property really is. But we're really going to be open and transparent with this, and like I said, we want to, we have some really smart citizens out there, and we want to capitalize on what they can offer us and help them in return.
I think it sounds like a great idea. I will challenge my colleagues here to watch each of the videos and also take those three quizzes.
Yeah, that'd be great.
If we can all pass the quiz, then that would be a good thing.
I'm not sure, I heard the date that you said that they were available.
We have not publicized this yet. Of course, the YouTube video is already up, but as far as the quizzes, we have not done anything yet. I didn't want to get ahead myself and create quizzes yet, but those will be coming probably in the next couple of weeks, when we're getting deep into the process now. And if we're going to do this, it's time to go forward and get stuff out there. But I do think we'll have a lot of people interested. I think a lot of realtors want something behind their name, as simple as it may be, they want something behind their name saying that I know about this revaluation, because they are... revaluation." Because they are going to get questions. You're going to get questions. Everybody's going to get questions.
Will there be a fail-safe for those who failed the test?
Well...
A safety net? When you take it twice?
Yeah, I, I think we will open it up. We're going to take it twice. We're not going to give you the correct answer if you fail at a certain time. Yeah. But the goal is to educate people and make sure they do know, at some point in time, they know the correct answer to each question.
As you get older, you do have test anxiety. I largely certainly took my concealed carry class, and I had such major anxiety over passing that written test. The aiming one I didn't, but the, the written test I did. I passed it. So we do have test anxiety the older we get. Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Dwayne. I think it...
Thank you.
There's really no action that, um...
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Sure, mine's on. Quiet. All right. Next on the agenda, new business. A request to appear before the board, Don Schreiner.
Madam Chair and all commissioners, my name is Don Schreiner. I'm the president of Lee County Veterans Council. And as most of you know, we represent, we represent the veterans of foreign wars, the American Legion, disabled American veterans, and the Marine Corps League. And the purpose of this is to give you a report on what our status has been since we were born. Excuse me. The Lee County Veterans Council was officially established by a resolution from the Lee County Board of Commissioners on the first of November of two thousand and ten. Since its inception, the council has met on a monthly basis in order to consolidate and promote the interest of veterans, their families, and the community of Lee County. On the fourth of November two thousand and ten, the Lee County Veteran Council Constitutional was read and approved by majority vote. Since that meeting, the council has met with and gained approval and support of the city of Broadway, North Carolina, to use the North Carolina Veterans Memorial for veteran-related events, gained the approval to use the county seal as part of the logo for the council, purchased polo shirts and hats with the Lee County Veterans Council logo, and provided to all active Lee County Veteran Council members. We held a memorial observance with a guest speaker, Lieutenant General Christmas, approximately one hundred and eighty people attending. We participated in and manned a booth to promote the council during agricultural fair, provided volunteers for setup, information, security, and dismantling of the wall that heals. That lasted over a five-day period. Supported Chick-fil-A in promotion of their fundraising event, which donated must-needed funds to the Wounded Warrior Program and Fisher House. In cooperation with Applebee's Restaurant, we held a fundraiser which netted five hundred dollars for future use by the Lee County Veterans Council in support of local activities. We held a Veterans Day ceremony at the North Carolina Veterans Memorial Park in Broadway. We provided donations to, in support of the Marine Corps Toys for Tots program. On behalf of the Lee County Veterans Council and surrounding counties, presented a plaque to Miller Bowl's Funeral Home and Jamie Bowl for bringing the wall that heals to our community. Future activities that we're planning right now, we plan to conduct Memorial Day activity on the twenty-eighth of May. We plan to conduct a Flag Day activity on the fourteenth of June. We plan to conduct a July Fourth activity. We plan to conduct a Veterans Day activity on November twelfth. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for any of my colleagues?
I had a couple. How many women are involved in your council?
There aren't no women.
Is, are they prohibited or just haven't had any?
Oh, absolutely not.
Have we tried to recruit any?
I'm sorry?
Have we tried to recruit any?
Uh, personally, I have not tried to recruit. As a participant in the BFW and the American Legion, I know of one female veteran in the BFW and one in the American Legion, frankly. I have not tried to recruit them, no. But we would not hesitate at all. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Schreiner.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, Mark Thomas. He had requested to appear before the board to discuss placement of the sale of beer and wine on the May primary ballot.
Thank you, Madam Chair and all the commissioners. Uh, my name is Mark Thomas. I'm the small business owner of Mark's Breitentackle located on forty-two Avens Ferry Road. Um, you know, being a small business owner, you know, there's no beer sales in the county of Lee, you know, outside of city limits. I come today to request or ask if we could actually put that on the May primary ballot. Um, I have here Connie Deal, which is with Bass Stop and Loom Springs. We both here support each other because it really would hurt, help our business. Because it's been tough with the economy, and we just want a fair shake at, you know, the sale of a product that is being sold right around us. And, you know, I can speak for myself because I've received people that's coming in from Chatham that's coming through, and then they come in and ask for the product. I don't have it, so they're going back into Chatham. Just trying to save the tax dollars here for Lee County, you know? And as a small business owner, it's a product I would like to sell. So, you know, I'm asking if, you know, you consider putting it on the May primary because, you know, we know on even year, we can't put it on the general election. And it's a short window, but, um, I just want to make it short and sweet and just ask if we could put it. It was one thing from some of the citizens that voted in, in the two thousand and eight vote. That was, I think it was a special vote. That was a petition kind of thing. They said the ballot was very hard to read. All we're asking for is an off-premise for beer and wine. Don't move on premises. All I'm going to do is sell it and let them go home. All the grocery stores sell it. Walmart takes their money back to Arkansas. I just want to be able to sell it for Lee County and keep the tax dollars here. Um, that's pretty much all I have. I don't want to waste the time with it. Just want to see if you guys are the same with me.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Just, uh, so, so if it's on premises, that means that one would sell it and serve it. That's what that means?
Sell and serve. Yes, sir.
Get that, and, okay. And off means simply they buy it at the counter?
Take it home.
Take it. Uh-huh.
Yes.
And this would be for malt beverages or beer?
Yeah, beer and wine.
And wine.
Yeah. I think I'm the highest list of un fortified wines.
Un fortified, boy.
Yeah. All I'm asking is for beer and wine. You know, I think that's what commonly the most, you know, the city limits is for Broadway and Sanford have, you know, that they can sell.
And the idea would be that, um, that with this notice, that it would be placed on the, um, agenda on, in the...
The May primary.
The May primary, and it would be for all of the county?
Yes. I would have it vote, uh, put on the primary for, you know, all of Lee County. But I think like in two thousand and eight, it was voted on by precincts. Still like to have it that way because one precinct may not want it. And I don't know, I didn't do my homework on how many stores, but I know me and Connie both, he's in Loom Springs, I'm in Cape Fear Township. And there's one more in Deep River, and I don't know about Trantwell. There's limited stores that's out in the urban area that we just can't sell it. And, you know, as a small business, it's just been tough for us with the economy.
So, so the election would be, it would determine which precinct might, precinct that would approve it would, would be able to sell it. Others who did not approve it would not sell it. So, so a vote would not be binding for all. It's just for those precincts who wish to, to approve it. Is that correct?
Yes, because I, I can't speak for the precincts. I'm stepping up.
No, I know. I mean, just technically speaking, that's, that's the way that would work. Let me ask you one other thing. Do, do you know if adjoining counties such as Harney and Chatham and Moore, do they sell these beverages in the county?
Yes, sir. Um, Harney, I think was the latest to come on board, and they're by district also. I think some approved. I think barbecue district may. And I may be speaking outside, but being in convenience store industry, I know other store, store owners in other counties. And they just brought, voted in a couple of years past. Chatham, I hear a lot, you know, they have it, you know, just across Cape Fear River, which I'm about two and a half, three miles from. And, you know, um, Moore County, I'm assuming has it too. But, um...
Madam Chair, we have a vote of elections director here. Maybe we'd like her to come up and maybe explain how it works or remind some of how it works.
John, I'm just there. So, um...
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
You want to know how it works?
My question would be, if you do it countywide, and it fails in one township, and it passes in three, do those three sell and the one that failed in? Or if you, if you do it countywide and it passes your countywide with it, is that right?
No. It would still be by township.
Still be by township, okay.
If it passes in one township and fails in another, you could, you could sell it in the one township and not in the other.
If it's on a countywide ballot?
That's correct.
That answered my question. I have a, we'll hear it.
We are under a deadline, though, for this to get on the May primary ballot.
That's correct.
Okay. Explain that to us, please.
Uh, we have to have our ballots ready to go to absentee voters by the nineteenth of March, which is only two weeks away. And we don't even have a printer yet because we haven't known what we were going to do with this situation. Um, we will need a resolution by you within the next two or three days, three, when we say Thursday.
Thursday, that's what I computed.
I'll move to schedule it for the next May primary.
A motion has been made for this board to sign a resolution approving it to appear on the May primary ballot. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, there may be a need for one clarification. I'm not certain Ms. Kimball understood a question asked of her.
Okay.
With respect to the method of voting, you can vote by townships. And if the vote is for in a township, whatever proposition is on the ballot carries.
In that township.
In that township. Or you can have a countywide election, not on a township basis where the vote of the county minus the municipalities would then allow the proposition to be voted on. Is that your understanding?
My understanding is, is that it's voted by township. It's yea or nay by township.
That is a mythology.
Not by, not by countywide. Does that, do we differ on that one, Mr. Thomas?
I, I think we're saying the same thing. I mean, if you vote, if we resolve to go countywide, then each township may or may not vote to have it in that area.
That's correct. That's correct.
That is correct. That's my township.
It'll be on the ballot. They'll just vote yes or no. Commissioner, on to your question.
Nobody else done? I just wanted to ask the question to clarify why the expense, what's the additional expense that's, that's incurred? It was in the read-ahead packet you got?
At the present time, we have twelve ballot styles going out. Um, we will have to have a ballot style for each township. That will mean extra ballots will need to be printed. And we will have to have extra cost for the coding of those ballots.
So the cost is because we have to print additional types of ballots?
That's correct.
Not just the quantity of ballots, but types?
That's exactly right.
Okay.
Is a township different than a precinct?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
So within a precinct, how many townships would you have?
Um, if we, if we went with, um, let's say the West Sanford Township, it would be, um, there are eight precincts that would be hit with this extra ballot style.
What about in the unincorporated areas? Because that's really all that this affects, right? So in the...
Well, that's, that's part of it, is that, that there is unincorporated areas in the West Sanford Township. And, and, you know, then, then you look at Deep River, which, um, it's only the one precinct, but it's the one township.
Nancy, let me, let me go back to my question again for a second. The, uh, the total number of ballots that'll be printed won't change, correct?
No, that's, that's actually not correct.
Okay. So why would we have more ballots printed if we had the same number of anticipated registered voters? It's because you don't know what type of ballot they're going to ask for?
That's correct. That's part of it, is the unaffiliated ballot, which we don't know what, what. We will have to have enough ballots, Republican, Democrat, Libertarian, to cover anything that an unaffiliated voter would want to vote. And then we would have to look at the, um, the ABC part of it, which we would have to have, um, let's say we would have, um, county commissioner, of course, that's, that's all county. But we would have to have like fifty-four or fifty-one of the House of Representatives. But then it would also have to hit that township. So we would have to have extra ballot styles for the different townships to go along with that, that house, um, race.
So even if we want to just say county-wise, it's...
Ballot styles are very different.
I know it's complicated.
Yes, sir.
The, the total amount of money that, that you anticipate will cost us additional in order to put this on the ballot is how much?
They request a petition for the...
Six to eight thousand dollars.
Six to eight thousand dollars.
Sixty-two to eighty-one hundred is what it says.
And if this passes, that probably would be made up in tax...
So we would have to have all four on the ballot. Is that what you're...
I don't know. He says it would be.
Mr. Thomas?
Who else do they get? Not exactly what?
I'm sorry.
All right. The, I guess the other question is just want to try to verify what was in the read-ahead packet. It was six to eight thousand dollars total cost to do the additional ballot style setups and printing, right?
That, that would be if it was a separate election.
If it was a separate election. But if it's part of the May primary?
We'll still have added, added costs.
Right. But it won't be that high?
Maybe not to that point. But if, we still will have added costs for coding, for extra ballots to be printed.
Okay.
Um, we would not have the cost of, of election officials at the precincts.
Good. That's, I guess that's a key point. It's not going to take any more overhead to conduct this since it's part of the...
Right. Right.
And, and, and I don't know if, if, if the county finance officer wants to speculate on this, but have you given any thought to the potential revenue increases this might generate for the county in terms of sales tax?
No.
All right. So, I mean, we, I don't know that any of us want to speculate on that, but it might, I mean, does Mr. Thomas have an idea about what volume of sales he might anticipate would be increased as a result of that?
I'd hate to give you a balloon estimate, but Connie, could you help me?
Excuse me. When I had a store in, uh, barbecue township, I sold six hundred cases of beer a week. And that's a lot of beer.
Would it be fair to say the tax will go up?
Oh, yes. Absolutely. Sales tax is going up.
The first year, if it's countywide. If it goes countywide, it'd be paid for in six months.
We voted for it by precincts last time. And in Harney County, they did it all by precinct, not from countywide.
Yeah. The other, the other question I would have, and this may be way out there, but I don't know if Lieutenant Pravat wants to, wants to even comment on it for the sheriff's office, but I'm just curious about what the sheriff's position would be on something like this. What he thinks it, it might do in terms of decreasing or increasing our vulnerability to drunk driving and that sort of thing. I know this is for off-premises consumption, but I'm just curious about what the sheriff's department might think about this. Any idea? No position?
Yeah. Only thing would be the ABC officer that you'd have to consider.
Right.
To regulate it.
And Madam Chair, before a vote is taken, there is another matter that I would need clarification on to draft the proper resolution. In the law, there are seven different propositions you can vote on. Four dealing with malt beverages and three dealing with fortified wines. They each allow different things. We've heard Mr. Thomas say that all he is looking for is the proposition of whether to allow the on, excuse me, the off-premises sale of fortified wine, the off-premises sale of malt beverages. So those are two separate propositions that he's proposing. But there are five others that the law allows, and those are outlined in the statute that's accompanying your materials on, uh, separate pages. So if there's going to be a vote on what we're going to present to the Board of Elections, it should be detailed enough concerning which of the propositions this board is going to ask be placed on the ballot.
There goes the reason I asked her to come up, so that we can clarify what it is we're going to be doing and that the public might get an opportunity by viewing this to understand what it is they're going to be offered.
And if you'll go to page fifty-five.
Yeah.
That's the last election results.
Right.
And we have annotated those results by putting out to the right the kind of resolution or, or proposition it was, like, uh, election one was permit the on-premise and off-premise sale of malt beverages.
Well, Loom Springs, would you be looking for something different than what Mark was looking for?
No, sir.
So it'd be the same thing?
Off-premise.
So I think we've got the answer there. They came forward with this thing, so...
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would just also suggest that, that since the request that stimulated this whole discussion was for a limited, uh, vote, that, that we not try to extend that beyond what he requested. I mean, that's what the citizens asked for. If it's going to be considered, that's what we ought to consider, not something expanded beyond that.
That's one of the reasons why it failed last time is because people had, didn't understand all this stuff. So it's, we, you're just requesting... You're just requesting the off-premises sale, and so...
A fortified wine.
Can that be wrapped into the motion then, in order that we can go ahead and approve this by March eighth? In other words, we need to move along if we're gonna do it.
And let's make the ballot simple enough that everyone understands it.
Right.
So Commissioner Reeves, are you gonna amend your motion to include only off-premise beer and wine?
Basically.
What's the difference between fortified and unfortified wine?
Well, the fortified wine has additives that increase the alcohol content.
Does anybody in Lee County sell off-the-shelf?
ABC.
Each store certainly does. Not that I would know. I don't...
Okay, motion has been made for this board to approve a resolution for off-premise beer and wine to be presented to the Board of Elections so it can appear on the May primary ballot. If you've had the discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Pass it now, Leslie. Thanks, guys. Good luck. Gotta go out and promote it now.
Good work, folks.
Okay. I think all businesses should be treated equally. If there's somebody in Lee County that can sell it, everybody should be able to sell it.
That's why it's going on the ballot. That's why it's going on the ballot.
Okay, down to item D. Mr. Bridwell is going to present a community development opportunity for the Medical Arts Village. I think everybody has this big color picture.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, delighted to be here. Mr. Trump had asked me to make this presentation. We've been introducing it to a couple places here recently. It's been under... Actually, it's been under works for probably five or six years. We had a couple of property owners in and around the hospital area ask the planning staff to look at ways we could promote the general medical community around the hospital as an economic development opportunity. So we began approaching this particular area in that light. Subsequently, we've also added two other areas, but I'll talk about this one first. At this time, I'll talk about the others. We began that process by considering the fact that we have in Lee County a particularly important asset around the hospital, being one of our largest employers in Lee County, and the medical community that supports that hospital and is ancillary to it. So we began looking at what were the major advantages that we had for, as an economic development project, and what would we need to do in order to enhance it, to make it more marketable for future development, as per the original request by the property owner. When we did that, we started looking at... This would be easier probably to read it on the package that you have, looking at a model of development that would affect not only this village, but other villages we might examine. And we started looking at it from three aspects. The physical value added, the economic value, and the social value, not only to the area that was being addressed, but all the adjacent areas as well, and to Lee County in addition to that. So in terms of the physical characteristics, we started asking questions on how that might work. What is the economic value that's gonna be brought forth as a result of this project? And we looked at the elements that were contained therein, physical as well, how it's gonna make the community more attractive. And also, one of the things we also wanted to address was how are we gonna look at the adjacent areas to the project we were looking at? And in this case, we looked at the areas surrounding the hospital, including some distressed neighborhoods of some historic district, the downtown, and some adjacent developing activity as well, and large, very large number or large acreage of undevelopment activity. I'll show that to you in a map in just a minute. So we looked at all those characteristics to see what the impact would be for the city and for the county, and how we could use that as an economic engine going forward. We know, for instance, that Central Carolina Hospital attracts a large number of employees. It serves a very large population that extends, includes, but extends beyond Lee County to a much larger area. We wanted to make sure that the hospital and all the medical facilities that surround it have all the advantages that we could possibly give it. So we began looking at it in that light, some of the things we can do. We also started addressing some of the people who might be involved. We discussed this concept with DOT, because Carthage Street is part of a major aspect of what's gonna need to be improved. It's also part of our recreation plan, as you'll see when we start looking at a couple of the illustrations, that the opportunity to develop a therapeutic trail within the area was considered to have particular importance for future development. We also wanted to consider what the impact was on the existing property owners. And at the end of this presentation, I'll give you a brief discussion on how we're gonna approach that as a project. But those are the characteristics we looked at in terms of how we can approach the medical village as a development concept. If you look at the physical aspect, we took the intersection of Brickner and Royal Field Drive and basically made an analysis of that. We have the traffic counts that go with our DOT thoroughfare planning process, and we know that that particular intersection is one of the more congested intercity intersections that we have in Lee County. And it's also one of the areas that, given some physical changes, could be dramatically improved with a... I was gonna say minimal investment, but it wouldn't be minimal in terms of actual dollars. But with a reasonable investment, we could make that area change dramatically relative to how it would be. So we looked at the possibility of what that would look like. And probably, again, you can probably see it better by the long backs in front here, when we looked at the additions of streetscape, sidewalks, curb and gutter, street lighting, pedestrian crossings, medias, and tree plantings on that boulevard, and how that would dramatically improve the physical character and quality of the medical district area. Again, we called it Medical Village because we were trying to give it a unified concept and a village look, looking at pedestrian lighting that was scaled for pedestrians and giving that an attractive nature that you see in other communities. In essence, you don't see this level of development in the suburbs, around more regional, but it has that same kind of look. So we decided to go ahead and take a look at that from a conceptual standpoint and what kind of dramatic effects we can get along that process. We actually addressed this when we were doing our transportation plan. And I believe, Madam Chairman, you all got copies of the text of that transportation plan just recently. And if you flip through those pages, you'll notice that we have cut drawings of the actual street improvements along selected thoroughfares, including Carthage Street. So we began working on this process some time ago by actually putting the street designs in the thoroughfare plan as well. In this particular process, we're looking at ways we could take Carthage Street, put medians and plantings in it, still handle the pedestrian and traffic flow in a reasonable manner, and make it a safer place. Not only a more attractive place, but a safer place in order for people to visit as well. And I believe even one of you commissioners have had a recent encounter with pedestrian traffic along that area and realized how dangerous that area can be. You literally are taking your life in your hands when you try to cross Carthage Street to go from the doctor's office to the hospital.
We'll check a slide, Lee.
I sure will.
So is that considered a bicycle trail on the... Point out where the bicycle path is.
Well, in this case, the bicycle... We have... It would actually be on Carthage Street. It would be on the street by the way. We don't actually have a medium here, Madam Chairman, but that's what we'd be intending to make.
Well, it looks like there's a... I guess it's called curb and gutter, but it looks like kind of a path.
A line here. We'd extend that to be broader, and that's what we're planning on doing if we get this project going. If that makes sense.
Bob, looking at your picture.
We did this on software. This is just a demonstration package. So we had someone to teach you what we're gonna do.
But it appears you're having a medium with four lanes, is that right? You got a medium, planted medium, and then two lanes on one side and two on the other?
That's what it appears right here. But actually, what we're thinking, given the right-of-way that we have of there, that that center lane, that what they call the suicide lane, when that has become the median... Now, we couldn't landscape all that, just be physically impossible to do that, Doc. I think you've been through that.
Right, yeah.
But we would take portion of that we would landscape as well, especially wherever pedestrians were crossing. And I'll show you in just a minute where we have one pedestrian crossing design. That's to calm that traffic down enough that people could walk across that. So any questions on the design work we've done? I think you've made some, but this is the concept we're trying to address as well. Now, I will hasten add, because I'm told by the engineers that some of the stuff is not feasible. Our planners have to change our designs once in a time to accommodate the engineering aspects as well. But all this stuff can be done within the right-of-way we have existing.
I bet. City engineers or DOT engineers?
Both.
How much right-of-way did they have now, Bob? You know, sixty feet, eighty feet?
It's eighty feet.
Eighty feet.
Is this a city project?
That's an interesting question, because I think it is a city-initiated project. But it's gonna have to involve DOT, it's gonna have to involve other funding sources as well. We're gonna look at DOT as a possible source of funds. We're also looking at part of Park Street Recreation, transplant funding for our greenway as well. And that's starting this year, Mr. Reeves, so that's probably the first place that we're looking. But it will certainly involve city funding.
State parks and recreation.
Yes, sir.
Given the current buildings that are there, Bob, and just looking at your design here, are some of the buildings proposing to be destroyed and rebuilt, or...
No, sir. No, sir. If you're in your mind's eye, if you'll just look at... Just remember what's in that area. It's... Most of those buildings there have been there, have been built probably in the last thirty years. Most, if not all, are fairly attractive buildings. What they lack is some unification, some common themes that tie them together.
Okay, well, I just was looking at your one drawing here that looked like it was different, so...
Now, again, that's a conceptual drawing. That's a planner drawing rather than a general drawing.
Just a comment that, first, you know, this looks really good. I mean, it's really an attractive kind of approach. And when you see it in contrast to what it is now, I don't know how we could not have something like this, considering the density of the population in that area. I suppose this is another way of saying, I hope that we succeed with this, because with the sidewalks helping people to get from doctor's office to doctor's office and across that street, I mean, it's a clear and present danger. And it seems to me like that this is really the way to go. And what is the timetable? Do you believe that if all goes well, that we could look at something like this completed in the next twenty-four months?
Let me... At the end of the presentation, let me give you what I'm gonna be doing next, and maybe that'll make more sense. Because this is one of those things where, you know, I'm accused sometimes of being that balloon-headed planner that comes up with stuff, and the execution is really the name of the game. I'm gonna give you what my anticipated execution is going to be. And as many of you all know, I'm retiring in two years, so I'm trying to expedite some of this stuff, but get some of the...
But that's the reason I said two years. I was thinking before you...
There is very competent people that also work with Lisa, and it does not depend on me at all, certainly. This is the intersection treatment, by the way, one of the concepts. You can see where we're dealing with the movement of traffic at that intersection. That is the principal intersection that we're looking at, and that gives you another concept of how we're looking at that area. Now, here's the real trigger on this thing. We're not talking just about Carthage Street and Field Drive. We're also talking about all the privately developed property there as well. Now, that's where the real trick comes in, Mr. Hayes, is that we're asking for a public-private partnership. So we're gonna have to, for many reasons, not the least of which is just pure decency, is involve the property owners that were there now, and what their concerns are, what they want done. And it's gonna be a hard sell to some of them.
This does not necessarily reflect that. Some are on their part. I mean, you've done some.
We have done some primary work with the hospital. The hospital has an interest. We have worked with some individual property owners. But the next step would be literally going out to, I believe there's ninety-nine property owners in the district we've defined as today. We're gonna have to go out there and do a sales job to them as well.
What would be the number-one objection, do you think?
I think the number-one objection to some, it's gonna vary from property owner to property owner. The number-one objection that we can address the most readily is that what it might cost them and what kind of value they're gonna get out of it. It'd be incumbent upon us to prove to them that the value far exceeds whatever cost they may have individually.
Okay.
That's the sales job that will be incumbent upon us.
Right.
And we'll have to prove it.
And you do make the point. And just to reiterate, it is public-private, and so they would be partners in this. And do you expect that would be like fifty-fifty or what?
No, I'll now explain some of the concepts that we have that we're considering. And nothing is... None of this is set stone. Again, this is a... I'm not a concept.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to get a conceptual idea on that.
The improvements to Carthage Street, the public improvements, that's all a normal process that we go through with our transportation planning, with the city's capital planning. All of those improvements that normally take place, that would have to be... That would be a public improvement. Now, that doesn't mean that those private citizens should not have some say in that, because they certainly did. But there's other things that we're gonna be asking for that we think is important for them to do, so we're gonna find ways for them to pay for it as well. And I'll explain that in just a minute.
Let me ask you before you move on, and I don't have a page number, but it looks like KM Wicker Memorial and Fields Drive intersection, it's gotta look like he's doing a wheelie or something. Like a motorcycle or something. But is that the area, for example, if you... Gray card is coming toward the light, would be making a left to go on to Fields and a right to go back into the doctor's area?
Yes, sir, that's correct. You're looking towards downtown, all with that...
Right. You would... That's a beautiful thought there, but they got a tremendous traffic backup problem in there, as it currently exists. And to widen it for this purpose is gonna be quite a trick, because there's not a lot of land back there that I'm aware of. There's a creek, large creek back there.
If you recall, when you're looking at that picture, if you look on the right-hand side, one of the major problem areas from a design standpoint, and one of the things that concerns DOT the most is that huge ditches in there. DOT would really like to eliminate that ditch. The hospital would like to eliminate that ditch. That right-of-way extends all the way into that ditch area. And if we need more, I feel very confident that the hospital will be more than happy for us to widen into that area as well. And that's where I think a lot of the improvements that you're referring to, Mr. Reeves, which I agree with you totally, we'd have to be dipping into that area to make that happen. So when I say we have enough right-of-way probably at that intersection, we'd have to be going into that hospital area to make that happen.
Where would that drainage area go into?
It would be thin height. It would go into a stormwater system rather than an open ditch.
There is a stormwater system you can connect into there?
Yes, sir. That's where the engineers come in, is that right, though?
Yep.
And DOT, I think Chairman Shook was in a meeting where we presented some of these concepts, and we got a very good reception that day, including the Highway Commissioner was there when we were doing that. And part of this is recreation as well, and I'm gonna get into that in just a second. This is another area, just a representation, that's looking back towards those medical facilities back across Carthage Street. And I'm gonna show you that area that really relates to recreation as well. Just one over here. And I know King knows I'm going crazy every time I leave this mic, but I need to walk up here. This is one of the treatments that we're looking at. This is one of the newer concepts of dealing with pedestrians and traffic congestion, is bringing that sidewalk mid-block so that from those doctor's hospitals, they can access back to the hospital and get up there either through walking, wheelchairs, or even, and many of the medical communities are using golf carts and those small electric vehicles coming through there to carry some of that traffic. But this is really hard to see. We're actually looking at carrying the greenway, the greenway extension mid-block, rather than going down the creek, which we can't do, it's too... There's not enough land. Or using Memorial, Wicker Memorial, which is... We wanna keep people off that street rather than... So we're looking at doing it mid-block and literally using Carthage Street as a greenway and a sidewalk. We're serving both purposes. This is what we'll be looking at in the next phase of the greenway design, is getting that accomplished. So it serves two things. When we do that, and this is where we start doing this in phases, Mr. Hayes, when we do that, it really necessitates that side of the street, and that's where we put it. It literally could go on either side. But if we let it on that side, as shown in this illustration, we need to put the curb and gutter. So that, on that side... that, on that side, it immediately puts, addresses that side of the street and makes that improvement that we, that we think is necessary. Does that make sense? And it also slows that traffic down.
It's pretty.
One of the things that we, that we deal with now is the Greenway.
Oh, I just said it's pretty. I don't know if it makes any sense or not, but it's pretty the way it looks. Let, let me ask you, because what I see suggests to me that the private property owners are gonna have some difficult times with their clientele. I guess my, my thinking was, for example, over on Church Street, where it dead-ends, if it were to go through to Carthage Street, it would decrease some of the traffic in here, and I would be, wouldn't be surprised if, if, uh, trolley carts or those, uh, long golf carts and sort of restrict the amount of traffic on, on this street. Uh, it's pretty. It's gonna be expensive.
I had to go back to Mr. Hayes's questions, probably haven't been done in a couple of years, it's gonna, it's gonna be long.
Two years, not gonna have to be long.
But I, I, I think one of the things that we're, we're, we're trying to do is we're, we're trying to come up with, with ideas that are out of the box, some, some innovative kinds of concepts, because we continue to just do the same things we've always done. We're always gonna get what it always got. That's, that's our three steps. Well, then we start looking at how to make all this, and there's a lot of things, Mr. Reeves, that need to happen other than just listening to these drawings. I think you know that.
What, what are you fixing up on the housing authority side?
Fields Drive, um, when I got here ten years ago, was on the state's tip, and it was scheduled to, to be, uh, slated, to be constructed at some point in time. There were some community objections to the, the addition of Fields Drive without having any pedestrian treatment for Fields Drive, and subsequently, Fields Drive was taken off the tip. What we're gonna be proposing as part of this process is that Fields Drive go back on the tip with pedestrian access. And so we extend all those sidewalks, and they, they're not that far away. They literally run in front of the Public Housing Project, is that we extend that, and there's improvements all the way up there as well.
Well, in some of these cases, you have your, uh, ambulance services.
Yes, sir.
And, I mean, they run fields on a regular basis, and not to do anything on field wouldn't make any sense to me.
It would make, it would not, this plan would not work if you don't do, if you don't address Fields Drive.
So, how much involvement is the housing authority gonna have in this village, or any?
They, they would have to have a lot of input. In fact, the adjacent neighborhoods are gonna have to be very much aware of what's going on here.
Okay.
Because there's some improvements that are gonna have to take place that's gonna materially affect them.
That's right, that's right.
And we've got to keep them involved. And we have to do the same thing with the, with the, with the folks who live on the other side, back in there as well, because we get some improvements that have to take place.
I agree.
We, we do think that this is gonna have a very positive impact on downtown. We're trying to talk. In fact, downtown is really the model, uh, for some of the stuff that we're using in terms of how to get it done. You're, you're seeing a map here that's called a municipal service district, which is literally what we have in the downtown area. Downtown Sanford is a municipal service district. They have voted to create their own tax district, and they've levied taxes to do certain kinds of activities. We're, we're saying, you can do the same thing here. You can bring these property owners together to, to levy their own tax rate if they so desire, uh, to do certain kinds of activities. You can also use this municipal service district for them to do assessments like procurement of, or sewer, in those areas that are currently private property, back on those drives. That's one of the mechanisms they can use to help pay for the improvements that would be, that would be affecting their areas. So, uh, so that's why we've drawn this map, for that, to show that purpose, what properties could potentially be included. And we've included all the existing medical, all the medical offices and developments there as of now, plus, this is a, there's a, an incredible amount of vacant undeveloped land in this area. These people would all be a beneficiary of the long-term policies of making this into a municipal service district. So we would have to be proposing them, saying, these are some of the things that, that can happen. In fact, we have done an analysis that I don't have here today, of potential kinds of activities: retirement centers, hotels, restaurants, support offices, ancillary activities, all of which would be developed kinds of activities that could go into this municipal service district and contribute to the tax base of the county. So that, we're looking, we're trying to look at all these things, and, and I think Mr. Reeves is pointing out, we still got stuff, we gotta, we've got to identify and make sure that we cover correctly, or we're gonna have, we would have ongoing problems. But we, we feel like this is an interesting concept to look at. Some of these maps in here are, are just illustrations of, this is one version of the municipal service district. Um, this is existing area that we identified here with their land uses, so you can look at all the land use activities taking place. Um, this is a proposed area around that, around that hospital that we think, we can look at several ways. Um, this is the one we looked at back originally, so we adjusted some of these things. This is more for historical, I think the point here is, is we haven't really tied these numbers down yet. We're still doing the analysis and trying to make, take a look at it and how it might work. And we've done an analysis on the property owners, so we know who they are as well. Um, again, we've, we've, we've had a preliminary meeting with, with representatives from the hospital, Mr. Hughes, the company being at that initial meeting. We got a good reception. Uh, they, they reminded us at that point in time that we've got a lot of work to do with existing property owners, so that's probably one of our next steps, is to start meeting with them. But we wanted, we, we presented this to council, we're presenting it to you, we wanted you to know where we're going with these kinds of projects, and we have two others. Uh, we have an area around, uh, the hos, the, excuse me, the courthouse, uh, where, where some redevelopment activities have been taking place, the demolition of the warehouses, uh, we've been doing some brownfield work there. Uh, we also think that could have a positive impact on adjacent neighborhoods, and around the high school and the civic center, which we're calling the education building here. And, uh, we've actually got some design work already done because of, you know, Central Carolina's campus, uh, and master plan, we can slip that right into that process.
But when you meet with the individuals, or the individual property owners, do you plan to just have a public hearing on that, or are you gonna just meet with them individually?
I, I don't know, Mr. Parks. I'm, I'm kinda thinking right now that when we start that process off, that I'm gonna sit down, like I did with, as, when I was a banker, and just sit down and say, here's an idea, what do you think? And, and not do it so formally at first. I think later on, we're gonna have to have some formal public hearings, but I, I think it's time for us to sit down and talk about this as a business transaction. Um, how's it affect your long-term, uh, investment opportunities, and, and how do you think that we could do stuff, stuff differently or better that would affect you? So I, that would be my inclination right now, how we're gonna approach the initial.
Have you pursued if there's any rural economic development in France?
Yes, ma'am. That's, that, Mr. Hughes and I are gonna be working on that. It's one of our, one of our other initiatives that we're gonna be dealing with. As you, as you know, we like to, we like to go after any money that's out there.
I like, I like your concept, and, uh, what I'm thinking about, just sitting there thinking to myself, yeah, get this on paper, and of course, I know you're gonna have to do it in stages because of funding, and, but it would be nice to have it, so if in the future we have some shovel-ready money, we'll be ready.
And, and that was another thing, why, that was another reason why we bumped this whole process up, so that that gave you an opportunity to be out there with it. Plus, we need a lot of cooperation from a lot of folks, including you all. We want you all to be aware of exactly, uh, what's going on, although we're not asking any money from the county on this project, there may be, the other two projects we may be asking.
Mr. Brid, Mr. Bridwell, you, you will be, uh, you'll have a plan, A, a Plan A and a Plan B, I suppose, when you go and begin to talk with partners in this. I'm, I, I think you're right in saying, let's have a village conversation and talk about this, but I'm, I'm also hopeful and assuming that you will have a lot of goods that you know and are prepared to present. In other words, my own preference is that you go with a plan that has real possibilities about it, and, so, because if you just lay it out there, what do you guys think? You know, it may go south rather than north. Is that the obvious way to go?
I, I think we, we wanna give, we wanna give all the parties involved enough information for them to make a logical decision on what, what their role is and what they would like their, their, their public officials to do. Uh, I think that's, that's the deep level of detail we want to give them. We don't wanna give them so much detail that we have a, a, another plan.
Right.
Everybody, that's what everybody, I've been a planner for forty-two years, and the thing I hear most often, we don't, we don't, we don't want just another plan, we wanna be able to do something. So we need to give them enough to make a good decision, but also not, and be open to their ideas as well. A lot of the stuff right now is just stuff off the top of my head, and, and I don't think that's, that's gonna be enough.
Any other questions? I think it looks good. I'll, we'll be interested in the progress reports.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, EDC presentation on economic development, Mr. Hughes, on page sixty-four, Agenda PAX.
We're gonna check to see what, uh, what it is we have to do here to get to the right place.
I see you guys left.
Yeah. I think it's one upstairs. I was just told you was the clicker.
Actually, you probably can move the computer down the taskbar. Way into the rescue.
We're almost there. I see here, we're right there. Four seconds.
Yes. Okay, so I wanted to, and I appreciate the opportunity to come in and, and talk with you. Um, most of this presentation is something that I shared with my board at, at our last meeting. We had a chance to, kind of, talk a little bit about what's going on outside, outside of our community, and then how that might impact our, our particular community if some of those things actually come to fruition. So when, um, then I had a chance also to talk to the city council in one of their retreat sessions, and, and went through a number of these concepts as well. Again, today, believe it or not, I'm not asking for any funding, I'm not asking for, we're not giving the Board of County Commissioners, and it's a little bit different going on normally, so. But, but it is, I think, interesting information, I think is something for you to think about and, and hopefully act on sometime in the future, just to see if, if this is something that you may want to be part of. Normally, when I do a presentation, I, I kind of talk first about the legal basis for economic development. A lot of you know a lot about that already. Uh, this is what I wanna go to, the structure, the mission, the process, some of the economic drivers that we have out there in the, in the last fifty years here in, in our area, and that's, that's helped change our economy. And then what's the competition looking like and the opportunities, and what are we doing with our local product, and then what should we do next? Um, I present, I, I talk about this general statute all the time, whenever I talk about incentives, but this particular statute is the one that is for economic development, and that gives really the, the legal basis for cities and counties to spend public dollars on ventures, to create jobs, to create new investment, to have positive impact in the county. Um, that is, so this is the legal basis. What can a county do? These are specific listed items that counties may do, and cities may do, but really, I think all of you know there's an awful lot of flexibility in the law, and, and really, as long as you hold a public hearing, a county can do just about anything it wants to. And if you can convey property, that's going to be a little different ballgame, but it can do that as well. So the board structure, I think all of you know, we've got a twelve-member board, eight appointed, and four by the county commissioners, three by city council, and we're working with a two-hundred-sixty-three thousand dollar budget, and it's funded by the county, the city, and the town broadly. We talked about that. Our mission always, and has been for a long time, to, and we say to create, hopefully, county and citizens in the form of jobs and investments. Um, and, and you, you know, you can ask the question, are we creating the jobs? No, EDC is not creating the jobs, but we help facilitate the creation of jobs and the facilitation of investment in, in this community. Um, we, when you look at what we do day-to-day, we work with existing businesses, we try to understand what goes on there, and, and really to stay ahead of the game. And, and all of you know that a lot of the expansions occurred over the last fifteen years since I've been here, and have been with existing businesses, and we're very fortunate, and we've created businesses here, both small and large, that continue to look at expanding our operation. We've taken some hits certainly in the last three years, and everybody understands that, but it's no different, and we kind of flow with what the states, what's going on in the state, what's going on in the nation, and in the world also. But again, I mean, we need to meet with our existing businesses, understand if there are any impediments that, that are local here that would keep them from expanding and, and creating jobs. We also work on creating capacity within the community. We, we always drive for new product or sites, looking for improved infrastructure, improved education. And so when you see my reports on a monthly basis, then you see us involved in, in those areas typically. We also market for new business, always in partnership with somebody else. We're never, very seldom are we out there on our own. It's usually in partnership with other counties, or with the region, or, and/or with the state and our county. Always trying, when we go outside the state, always trying to grab a business from the state first, to the region second, and then to our particular counties, um, third. The site selection process?
Back up a step, that's the C-one-hundred.
Well, that's, that's the Committee One Hundred, that's the Le County Committee One Hundred.
So do they contribute money to your fund also?
They do not, they do not. That's a separate organization. It's, it's actually a five-oh-one-C-three organization. The EDC is a C-six organization. It is actually what we considered, when the chamber and I were talking about, and our boards were talking about doing a fundraising effort, you know, gateway in this community a few years ago. That's really the five-oh-one-C-three that we're talking about, the possibility of, you know. Haven't done much with the Committee One Hundred here lately, other than the Health of the County, that's the last, pretty much, formal report that we've done back in December. The site selection process hasn't changed. In fifteen years, in, in twenty years, what has changed, or so, so you go through, and, and whether it's the company themselves, whether it's consultants working for companies, um, you know, they, they look at, you know, opportunities all over the country, all over the world, to expand or locate an operation, and, and they start doing preliminary investigations. And all those investigations, what has changed is that a few years back, they would come, they would contact the state, they would contact us, and pretty early in the process, we then would get a call about, what do we have, what can we, what can we provide, and those kinds of things. Now, all those things are out there on the internet, and we sometimes really don't see them until step three under the, the field work, when they actually come out and verify all the information that may be out there. And that's information on the side end or the building. They're looking at also information about training programs, verifying what's on the site, if they're looking at a particular site and so on. They start out with countries, they start out with states, they look at several different communities within states, and then they start, and they understand that they can go to these different places, they start the negotiation process with the states, negotiation process with, with the local communities, and negotiations for the site, negotiations for the buildings, negotiations for workforce development or training that they might receive through the community college system, local incentives, state incentives. All those things are then negotiated, when they get to the final stages, and then, um, sometimes we get, we get the commitment from the company, and we're happy about that, sometimes we do not.
Hoping back, back up just a second, in relationship to the site selection and also the functions under market for new business, and listening to Bob Bridwell talk about, you know, this new medical park, how would you go about recruiting, let's say, um, new medical fields to come in and utilize and participate in that park?
Yeah. In, in terms of marketing for new business, we'll work, we've got kind of a small budget to do that kind of thing, so we're always looking to tie in with the research, trying to reason partnerships. They've got a host of clusters that they go after, including medical technologies, information technologies that are related to the medical industry. Um, I think in the case of, of the medical villages that Bob is talking about, it is, it is possible that you would see, you know, some kind of a unique thing go in there that may have, uh, unique testing capabilities or research capabilities. But more than likely, the kinds of things that we're going after are those companies that are making those medical devices. For instance, those new kinds of things that, that then are sold on the open market. Um, those pharmaceutical-type companies, both on the, on the dry side, pill side, or on the- or on the vaccine side. On the vaccine side, we've got.
It's like we have several things that are scattered around, like say, the orthopedic cert, you know, the orthopedic, uh, equipment type things.
Right.
Could we move those in?
It's a great example of that, and that's certainly, uh, that, that particular cluster, that falls under the, uh, the defense cluster that, uh, RTIP has and the BRAC group has as well because of, um, the things that have happened with the military coming back. So yes, we've got them in there, and then when we're out there, um, going to a trade show or we're talking to site selection consultants, then, you know, we can talk about what's available here in this community for that. Okay? But, but Charlie, that's a little bit different still than, than maybe the service providers that we're talking about in that medical village. And, and, you know, Bob talked about the, uh, the value of the, uh, infrastructure that's in place there, um, on the tax books. I think you said you told, you started about fifty-one million dollars. I think that's miniscule compared to the salaries and payrolls that are paid in that particular medical village. And, and that, if there's anything slated to grow, that's slated to grow.
Well, that's the reason I was interested in that, because if we have, let's say, we're having to go to Duke or More Regional or somewhere like that to get specialized-type things, you know, it seems to me like we should be working and bringing those into here.
Yeah. And, and I think the companies that might make those prosthetics or those companies that make those, um, medical devices, those companies that, that do that testing or make the vaccines, um, yes, we're all about that. Through the, um, the Norcon Biotech Center, through Department of Commerce, through Research Triangle Partnership, as well as the BRAC group. Okay?
I think the, the biggest, uh, challenge for us is those people who go in there and make those high dollars, those professionals, why don't they choose to move to Lee County? My husband, you know, went to a specialist out there this morning and, um, new doctor from Holly Hill, or Holly Springs. And he says, are you moving to, to Sanford, Lee County? No. You know? And you take a look at the big companies we have out, the industrial parks and whatever, it seems like the big head honchos of those companies, you know, will drive back and forth. They don't want to live here. So I think there's, we've got, you know, that we've got to face and, and deal with also.
Yeah, and I think that's a great point. And I think that's why I'm, I'm very glad to hear our planning department's talking about concepts like medical villages, the courthouse, uh, concepts or the educational village. Because, and then tying all that together with the, uh, the greenway. I mean, you, you start looking at, um, quality of life issues that way, and, and, you know, all of a sudden, that intersection that you just saw a minute ago begins to look a whole lot like what they have up in Holly Springs on fifty-five, uh, further in. But, of course, I think they have a roundabout there. They have roundabouts down there in Pinehurst, but, but it's that kind of look and feel, I think that people are after. And I think what, what I hear from the planning staff, I have heard for a long time, is we need to up those standards. What is that, what's our community going to look like, um, next year, five years from now, ten, fifteen years from now? What do we want it to look like? Because this may be a way to help drive that process a little bit. So, uh, for a long time, uh, we have, um, had an engine that's been working up there in, in the, uh, the Triangle area called the Research Triangle Park, a world-renowned research park. I think it's the largest research park in the world, uh, as well as, uh, best known, it's also the largest. But if, if you look, and it's a little bit hard to see on here, but those light, those light beige sites, which there are very few on the north side and on the south side, the south side being mostly in Wake County, the north side being in Durham County, uh, those are the only available sites that are left in the, uh, Research Triangle Park. So they are scrambling, they're going to come out with a plan. They have, um, had it under study for the last couple of years of how to reuse some of the land they have with, uh, within their corporate boundaries, which is what they have, uh, out there. It's a separate entity, uh, so they're looking at reuse and, and maybe try to better utilize some of the land that they have, um, for the research and development that takes place there. Glaxo-Wellcome, um, has a big half a million square foot building that, that is now being sold. I've heard, uh, stories about them, somebody coming in and maybe tearing that whole building down and then, uh, reusing it again, or maybe just reusing pork, uh, parts and pieces of it. Um, it, you just hear all kinds of stories. Bottom line is that engine right there for the last fifty years, and it's grown, uh, over the last fifty years, um, is almost out of land, and, and you'll hear a lot of, a lot of people say that. Um, the best sites out there might be eighty to a hundred acres, and, and that's probably no more than two or three hundred acres that they have left in this particular park. So that engine, um, unless they are able to re-energize that by adding land, which is going to be very difficult, or, um, utilizing some of the land that hasn't been developed in there that companies own, um, that's pretty much what you're going to see from now on. Um, so knowing that, um, and knowing some of the, the issues that exist in the middle part of the state in Montgomery County and, um, and then really Moore County not having many opportunities for manufacturing. Moore County and Montgomery County decided to look at, uh, the possibility of putting together, um, what they would call a mega site. And that mega site, at least initially, uh, they thought would be, uh, large enough to be able to house or, or be home to an automobile assembly facility. That's what everybody in North Carolina's kind of been chasing with, uh, with mega sites, and we've not had, uh, a good site to put up for, uh, for those kinds of facilities. So North Carolina really has not been in the running for that, um, since BMW went to South Carolina and since Mercedes-Benz went down to, um, Alabama. So, uh, they, they knew in Montgomery County that with the high unemployment rate that they have, um, the, the limited number of opportunities, that they needed to do something different. And I think that's what I'm really trying to tell you today is that you've got a lot of communities out there looking at doing economic development a little bit different than they have in the past. Um, and this is one way of, of being able to do that. Um, Moore County also is, is, um, a little bit different than most of the counties in the state of North Carolina. They enjoy a tremendous per capita income, um, level because of people that have retired in those areas. Really, outside the Pinehurst, Southern Pines area, it is, um, very poor. It is very much, uh, driven, um, you know, to, to the same point or to the same level that, uh, you see in, in some of the other, uh, poorer parts of the state in North Carolina. Um, so the idea of, of being able to put three thousand acres together and combining that and, uh, so that they then can offer that to larger projects, uh, is, is something that they're chasing. So, um, three thousand acres.
Let me ask you a question there. Do they have the infrastructure? Because I thought Moore County was purchasing water from Sanford. Does Montgomery County have the infrastructure to be able to support such a?
They're working on that. And, and, and it's, these are concepts out there that are flying around. And, and I will tell you that the answer to your question is no. There, there's not a lot of capacity, uh, in all of those places. So they're going to tie to something bigger, uh, maybe Ashboro to the north, uh, maybe, uh, maybe a little bit further west in Montgomery County, be able to tie some of that capacity that they have there on the Yakima River back to this site. Uh, certainly, it's out there, uh, you can see there that, that gas is twenty, twenty-five miles away. You're not going to get a big project without natural gas. Uh, the sewer, uh, Town of Bisco, they've got some capacity. Montgomery County does have water capacity, but it's not delivered there yet. So there are always those kinds of issues, and you'll see that with some other, uh, sites as well. But here's the beauty of it. You've got two counties working together. You've got, um, them thinking about different ways of doing business. You've got, um, they may go after a concept, in fact, will go after a concept of, um, that's been proven and is allowed in the state of North Carolina, where you can have tier-one status for that particular industrial park. And, and that piece that's in Moore County, which is a tier-one county, that doesn't enjoy the same tax credits or a company that doesn't enjoy the same tax credits as a tier-one, as a tier-three county, um, you have that as, and opened up as an opportunity for them. Um, so, you know, they're, they're working together to try to do something different. They're looking for that tier-one status. They're going to have to, um, have that approved by the General Assembly, which means every company creating jobs anew would be eligible for a twelve-thousand, five-hundred-dollar tax credit for every new job created, and a seven percent tax credit for the investment in, uh, property, or in personal property. Uh, those are, uh, significant investments when you start talking about large, large projects, and that's what they hope to do. Where are they at this point? They've got a resolution support, they've got their five-oh-one-C-three established. Um, they've got, uh, letters of intent with the landowners in progress, but they have three thousand acres put together right now, and, and most of that's coming from, uh, a former lieutenant governor, uh, Bob Jordan, um, in that, in that puzzle. They have a little bit of money that's been put together by the city and the county. They're looking for more money, and the reason they came to see us was to look at, um, maybe developing additional interlocal agreements between Lee County and Moore and that five-oh-one-C-three, um, where we might, uh, work out, uh, help them out financially, and then actually take a piece of the pie if something locates there as well, so that some of that joint tax sharing. Um, another, another thing they'd like to do is, is be able to include our information in their marketing plan that they've put together. Anyway, good things to talk about, good, um, good ideas, and as that plan moves forward, um, you know, at least the EDC will take a look at and see what, uh, how, how we might want to, um, be involved in that and what kind of recommendations we might want to make, uh, to the city and the county, you know, for that particular project. Another concept out there is what I call the four-twenty-one corridor style. That's where you have two regions, RTRP and the Piedmont Tribe Partnership. Four counties, Lee, Gulf, Randolph, and Chatham, uh, working together to understand, or to try to put together something along four-twenty-one. What are the benefits? Uh, you know, we may be able to put something together that has some of that same tier-one status, um, tax credit status for, for companies locating there. We may be able to market that quarter like, uh, an I-twenty-eight, uh, or the one-twenty-eight, uh, quarter outside of, um, no, I-seventy, two-seventy, between, um, Washington DC and, and the Frederick Marlin. Also, the Silicon Valley, for instance. And have the state of North Carolina know that that's a possibility as well. Uh, site identification would be another benefit, and the potential of a mega site along that area as well. A little bit hard to see, but from Greensboro to Sanford right there, um, and, and then Silo City in the middle. This process started because we, we wanted to help out, um, figure out a way to help Silo City and, and with some of the problems that they were having with Townsend and some of the other companies leaving that, uh, that city. Uh, so that's where it started. Um, then Randolph kind of got involved, um, so did the partnership up there in Greensboro. Um, Guilford County, of course, was brought, was brought in. They asked us to come in and start talking and working with them, um, in some planning meetings. And, um, and we're going to kind of keep up with, uh, with what's going on there. Uh, we're talking about, uh, something, and at that time, we were looking two, three, and five miles, or one, three, five, uh, two and five miles. I think we settled on a three-and-a-half mile, um, offset off of four-twenty-one or a seven-mile width. That includes, uh, a railroad track, uh, that, that runs along the, uh, that quarter. That includes four-twenty-one. Where's the water going to come from? You know, we've got multiple places, uh, but at Greensboro, Silo City, uh, or Sanford. Where's the sewer going to come from? You know, again, we've got all those, uh, places that may, that may need to get out of there, come from. Uh, we would also look at, and we're seeing some of this information come together, um, population numbers, uh, other demographics, that, uh, will be interesting to look at. Infrastructure, um, assets and needs that, um, uh, might, we might have in, in those areas. So what's that vision? What's that thing look, look like? Uh, again, keep in mind what's happening with RTP and the lack of available sites in those areas. Uh, Greensboro's been a great, you know, when you look along the I-eighty-five quarter that, uh, that, uh, that half moon from Charlotte all the way to Raleigh, uh, that's been, I mean, we fly over, uh, North Carolina, that's where the economic development is. There's no doubt about it, and then it kind of emanates out from there. This would help change that a little bit, particularly if there are some good sites that are developed along those areas, maybe a mega site. Uh, but you'd have, uh, you know, the vision of a unique blend of manufacturing and R and D playing off the universities and the community colleges that exist in the, uh, not only the Raleigh area and our area and, and the four counties, but Greensboro area as well. Um, a hybrid research park, um, that maybe, uh, then, uh, does the same kind of thing that, uh, you see RTP doing. Uh, you've got all these wide-open spaces along four-twenty-one as well. Um, so we, we would fit into that very well. When you look at the manufacturing percentages of all those counties, we all align pretty well with that, particularly in the metal work, uh, field, metal, the metalworking field.
About one-hundred-four, one-twenty-one corridor. That's from, say, like the edge of Sanford through Silo City in that way?
Right.
So it wouldn't include the bypass area?
Uh, no, I think we're, I think, right, none of that has been perfectly defined. Uh, we're, we're looking, we're looking at the, uh, stopping at US One and, and then, um, stopping at I-four on the north side. Now, um, it might include, uh, a little bit of land, uh, that would touch off the bypass coming in there because they're in that three-and-a-half miles zone from the, the summer line of four-twenty-one. So we'll get into it a little bit, but not all the way through town. Okay?
Let me ask you, how far would you actually be on the, uh, let's see, the four-twenty-one comes in on Hawkins? So from Hawkins up to our industrial park, how many miles?
I think we're going to be able to pick up a little bit of an industrial park as the crow flies.
Yeah.
Um, you know, but I don't think it'll go all the way up to, like, the Stroud property north of Colongrove. So we're, we're real close on that.
Mm-huh.
But that would, you know, we're talking about that, and I, I mentioned that at the last meeting. Uh, really don't have many sites along four-twenty-one between Sanford and, and the river. Um, there are a few opportunities there.
Right.
But, but not as many as I have north on US One. Okay? Anyway, so, so here we can do this marketing thing, you know, put a plan to go. It's got a little bit of legs under it in that the, uh, we, all we're doing is participating in meetings. We're not, we're not, um, having to put any money into it at this point in time. Uh, and again, I'm not here to talk about money, but, um, the Piedmont Tribe Partnership, um, is, has, has funded it so far, and we've got attorneys looking at, uh, being able to put some of the legalese together for, uh, that tax district, a tier-one tax stat, uh, status. And we're also looking at the, uh, maybe some other things that could be thrown in that as well. Um, but also, um, just kind of developing that, that entire marketing plan. So a bit, pretty interesting to kind of see those four counties and two partnerships work together. It's the, uh, one-twenty-eight, uh, one-twenty-eight around Boston was the other one that I was trying to think of earlier. Chatham Park, I think, uh, some of you, not all of you, have seen, um, the video that's out there on a site that's going to be just a few miles away from, uh, the Lee County border.
Do you ever know that website? I've heard about it, but I haven't seen it, the video.
I have, yes, and we actually showed it at our board meeting.
It says available on the website?
Yes. Yeah, it is on the web, and I can.
On the EDC website?
Not on the EDC website, it's on, on their website, and I can send you that link if you like.
If you'll just Google Chatham Park video, it will come right up.
But I'm more than happy to send you that link and you can, uh, dive right in. Um, the, the beauty of this, and I talked about RTP again, okay? And I think they have a vision for that live, work, and play concept. So that whole development is not going to be industrial development or it's going to just be, uh, research and, and development. And it's going to be a place where people can live, where they can walk, ride their bike, uh, run to work. Um, more than likely have, uh, research and development, uh, opportunities there. Probably won't see a lot of manufacturing in, in those areas. There may be some, or maybe very specialized, but that may be a place where we could benefit from something like that. Because if you think about, um, what, what Holly Springs and Apex looked at, looked like, um, fifty years ago, um, before RTP started blossoming and before that concept started, maybe we can think about that and, and as this particular thing gets off the ground. Um, I can tell you with one owner, um, that's a whole lot different than anything else we've dealt with. This one owner has got the wherewithal to make anything happen that he wants to happen in that particular site. Uh, they also have a group of experienced developers, and it's all high-end development. So, um, to your point earlier about we don't have people, enough people that are, um, that are managing some of the facilities here or some of the doctors living in our community, well, here's another opportunity for them to live, um, in an area fairly close that, that maybe has some of the standards that, um, that they're looking for, that their families are looking for, that's even closer than, than the Holly Springs and Apex. So again, for us to think about some of the concepts the planning department's put together about setting that standard higher than, than we have had in the past. And it's a, it's not a walk, I mean, a crawl and run kind of thing. I think we all need to, kind of crawl and then, and then walk and then run. Uh, that's some of the ideas that we're going to throw out here. But the bottom line is, there is an unbelievable opportunity there. Hal Hickman talked about it in Take Five, about our, for our airport. That's a possibility. It's five miles, um, to that site from the gates of our airport. Five miles. Now, that's a nice opportunity to make for some of those companies that are doing R and D there to get in their corporate jet and, and take off from there. That just makes a lot of sense. Um, all the additional commercial that could happen there. And then, then if we have R and D there and something, um, is, is developed there, that they bring that and, and put it into manufacturing, something like. and put it into manufacturing, something like we have here in Lee County on the Fosse side or in our industrial, on some of our industrial land. When you look at that, that's a map, that gray area is a map of about 70, 200 acres. That's just, just think about it. Pittsburgh is talking about, you know, what that might look like and what they might look like. Who knows? If this thing ever gets off the ground, I think it would be absolutely tremendous for our community. How are we going to fit into it? You know, there are discussions out there between the city and the developers there about providing water and syrup. Don't know exactly where all that's going, but at least the city is taking a look at that and see what the benefits are to doing that. How can the county get involved with that? My suggestion is, and I think, I think our EDC is going to come back and suggest it, you get, you take an opportunity to actually sit down with those county commissioners over in Chatham County and talk about this and see if there's anything that we can do to help make this thing get off the ground. We are actually going to have, the EDC is actually going to have a joint meeting with their EDC in March. And we're going to have a couple of guests there. One would be David Powell from the Piedmont Tribe Partnership and then Tim Smith, I think is scheduled to be there representing his Chatham Park. So we'll get a chance to interact with them as well to see what the relationship can be going forward on this.
Bob, that property that you're talking about is going to be all unincorporated area of Chatham County, but right, it's not going to be?
Today is currently, it's all unincorporated today.
It's going to remain that way, I think, right?
You know what? I don't know. I don't, you know, who knows?
Well, that makes a lot of advantage because when you add city and county tax rates together right there is an obstacle that a lot of companies are going to?
That's really kind of irrelevant anyway, isn't it? Because the, what is the Chatham County tax rate? Isn't it like 60 cents a hundred? Sixty and a half cents a hundred, ours is 75 cents. You could add city tax rates in there and it'd still be underneath ours.
I don't, to answer your question, I don't know what, you know, but you've got 70, 200 acres. Look at the little, the little green area for Pittsburgh, for Pittsburgh. Seems to me that that little gray area could easily swallow up that, that, that green area there, but who knows how it's going to work?
70, 200 acres, is that the Stroud property? You got to listen, you did something to Stroud property?
No, that's not, yeah, I've got one. No. So, again, my, I think that, you know, my chairman, I think what we're going to see is a recommendation after we meet with our, with their EDC and understand a little bit better about what may happen on that property. So regarding, I think, your recommendation from us for you to visit with the Chatham County Commissioners and maybe understand better what they're thinking about relative to this particular development. But think about RTP and what's happened around RTP and then think about this 7,000 acres here and what may happen in the next 50 years here as well. Okay? Something to think about.
Bob, let me ask you a question. Is there no consideration being given to going up at RTP? You know, you look at Singapore and all these great trading zones around the world and they're into the clouds. And I just wonder, just curiosity, is there a height limit or is this being studied? Because, you know, I could imagine 25 years from now, you'd look out over that, that area and you'd see, you know, great buildings that incorporate all of these types of research things. Is that?
I haven't seen the new study that's come out where they're doing more infill into RTP into that area. I'll look for that. And then once I get it, I'll get it out there. But you're exactly right. It certainly makes sense as that square foot price goes up. And they really need to start thinking about going vertical instead of horizontal. So, so then, you've got some product here as well. A little bit difficult to see, and you may have some maps, but this is our Lee County Industrial Park and we've talked about that over the years and the commissioners have spent, the county has spent probably 2.3, 2.4 million dollars early on. And with that money, they've built a road, at least I think I'm right on that, on the numbers around numbers. At least it was kind of helped us find some money back then. But anyway, we were able to put in a sewer system that has served that site. Nothing's tied into that sewer system yet, but it's there and it's given us some opportunities for some very, very nice projects over the years. Since we started this, the Challenge Printing Company and the Community College have built, built on that property, but still not being served by a sewer that was put in place there because we don't have enough waterfall lines going to those particular sites. We have a road that is going to be paved this summer. We're very excited about that and that'll be a great step in the right direction. We still won't have a water line and we still don't have a sewer line going to all the different pieces of property that we might be able to sell there. So that, that's something for us to think about. And then when we, when we set that standard for that road, you know, why don't we think about some of the things that Bob showed us with the village concept? Because really, that's what we're talking about trying to do in the industrial park as well, make this completely different to what we have currently at the industrial park burn or industrial areas. Really set the standard a little bit higher and maybe give us some opportunities for those types of companies that, that would be interested in those standards. So we've got some opportunities there and we should never forget, while we're looking at all these other things going on, never forget that we've got some things going on out there. This past year, we rezoned what we called the Stroud property, about 600 acres off of US-1 and north of Colton Road immediately adjacent to our industrial park. The last large project that came in there, you know, someone told me after that, he said, "Look, you know, we, this is a great site. It needs, it needs to be further developed and to have an opportunity for some of the projects that are out there." Not because of anything other than there are other communities that have developed sites that we're competing with. And that, that will give us a better opportunity. Won't give us any guarantees, but at least give us an opportunity for some of these other projects that are out there.
Mark, how many acres are involved in getting the road paved? And the Stroud property, how many total acres are you talking about?
Probably close to 900 acres, 950 acres, almost 1,000 acres all total.
Your color code, is that the red lines, is that all the Stroud property or the green or the?
The 600 acres in the red is Stroud property. The rest of that down here is not, but it's available for development. And then this is commercial development right there.
That's the road we're paving along where that blue area is, right?
No, this is, this is the part that?
Oh, it's Colton Road?
Yeah.
Okay.
Some residential property on that Colton Road.
Correct. That's correct. But they've agreed, they've agreed to that rezoning.
How about, how about, has the EDC looked into negotiating annexation anymore since we raised that subject?
I think we have had some discussions with the manager and we haven't formally been in front of the city council on this, but informally, we have talked about annexation. We've talked about their participation in, in developing the industrial park or an industrial park property or business park property, working together with the county and?
Well, I would just think if we're looking at exploring all these other counties and they're doing all these projects and we can't get along here at home, there's something not right about that in my mind. And just, please, please make your board aware. I think that's an EDC matter that ought to be taken up regardless of what others might think. That's an EDC matter. If we're recruiting and bringing them in, it's like an ambush. And we, at the end of the day, will be the ones with investments over in Chatham and down in Montgomery and nothing going on right here.
So Bob showed some pretties of some of the sites around Medical Village. This is actually an entrance into Gastonia Technology Park in Gaston County. Something that actually was about, I think, 10, 15 years in the making. So it wasn't done overnight, as ours has not been done overnight here. This is another, another way to look at it, not a little bit different than Medical Village, but not different than a Medical Village in that it sets a new standard out there.
I'm thinking they might've got a little help when they, what was that money? Came down in '08?
The Arrow money?
Stipulate, stimulus money. I think they got a little help out of that deal. They had some damage out there.
Certainly some of the numbers, unemployment wise, they were certainly impacted through textiles, tremendous textile.
The fact that they had shown already.
Okay, I talked about that. So what, what do we see here in the future? And I guess this is my message to this board and has been to the county, to the city as well. We clearly see more communities be much more aggressive in their approach to economic development. We've been very, very fortunate here in this community to have the companies continue to expand. We've had a few companies locate here over the years. We've got tremendous assets and we all always talk about the college, the general aviation airport, our connectivity with, with other communities. Second, third, and fourth largest met areas in the state of North Carolina tied together with four-lane roads. The most renowned, world-renowned golfing location tied together with a four-lane road here. So we are connected in a lot of different ways. We're also going to be connected with some new fiber that's coming through the community as well here in the next couple of years. So addition and welcome addition to the backbone that we have in this community already. Water and sewer capacity, we're blessed with it. What do we do with it? And then also our location, you can't fight it. And it's a blessing and a curse in a lot of ways because people can choose to live in a lot of different places and still do business here, whether they're living here and doing some business somewhere else or living somewhere else and doing business here. You know, so, but in the end, I think the more, the way I'm trying to look at it is from the optimistic side, the more connectivity we have, the more people we have going back and forth, the more increased commerce you have, the better opportunity we have in this community. And as one community grows, all the communities around us will grow as well. So the aggressive approach, people working together. Robert talked about us working with the city, let's work with the city. Talked about working with the other counties out there. Let's keep our eyes on what they're doing and understand what they're doing and is learning and maybe participate in some of that. The opportunities are out there. Park for 421 corridor, we're going to get some benefits from some of that. I'm not sure about the Herd of Carolina Mega Park, but you know, we're going to keep an eye on that. And then at the same time, all that's going on, if we just sit back and don't do anything and don't do anything with the Medical Village, don't do anything with the Courthouse Village, Educational Village, the other, the Greenway, if we don't do anything with our industrial park, we're going to be here 10 years from now. That's my story. Any questions?
Just a comment. It seems to me like that, I like what Mr. Reeves said about trying to focus on what we can do in Lee County and thinking about what Mrs. Shook said about people choosing to live in Cary or Holly Springs and work here but live there. I think that at the heart of all of this is opportunity. And of course, we have to find out ways to finance it. But it seems like to change that equation and to make this an attractive area for people to live and work at all levels of socioeconomic, that we're really going to have to lean forward. We're really going to have to get aggressive and we're really going to have to, to smoke and move out if we're going to compete. You know, I think about what you're saying to us right now, and I have to believe that there are communities in Chatham and Durham and Orange and around us that are just really taking off. And we cannot afford to be left in the dust. We have, we've got to be wise enough and progressive enough, in my opinion, that we really do focus on what we can do in Lee County big time and bring some of these types of things together in a, in a master plan that we can really become increasingly attractive. Like our industrial park, I mean, that seems to me like we're making progress, but it begs to be taken to the next level of quality, like you've suggested, because companies that are looking in these areas, they like, they like the environmental treatment, they like the bells and whistles. And, you know, are we going to be able to get that caliber of industry here? I think our chances will be improved if we really take this very seriously and search hard and work hard to find solutions. So, you know, this is good to have, but we cannot sit here.
You know, I want to, I did want to come in and phone that Stroud property in particular. For what it's worth, it bothers me that we get an investor of that magnitude and it just seems like it's lingering. You all may have something going, you and the city both, but this commission is not aware, I don't know what you all know, but it just bothers me that if folks take the time to come, take a look at our county and then invest, they'll say, "We ought to go according more often than we are to try and get something worked out." Folks see a six, a tract of land sits still that long, makes other folks wonder, "Why do you want to be bothered with going into Lee County for that?" So we all have to take a more aggressive approach to, to try and appease folks as best we can to bring the right kind of projects into this county and help them make it work.
Certainly cooperative landowner, there's no doubt about it.
Right.
Thank you, Bob. I love to say, I got really excited. I think, you know, what, of all the economic development materials I read, the number one factor in companies relocating is quality of workforce. And I got really excited last week when I attended the apprenticeship program between Lee County Schools, Central Carolina Community, and Caterpillar. I think that's a, you know, tremendous opportunity and Dr. Marchand said there's a couple of other businesses talking to him about this apprenticeship type thing. So I hope that continues and I hope that all of us will, will get behind that and support it.
That's exactly right. Thanks.
All right, five-minute recess?
We've got one item left on the agenda. You want to take a recess for that?
Yeah, we've got another.
I was, we had to.
Miss Hughes.
Yeah.
See you a minute before you leave. Don't mind.
Go ahead, we'll go on.
Okay. Next on the agenda then is, Mr. Wallman.
Yeah, I was just going to introduce to the, the board the concept that I've seen used in other counties and I've extracted from the Bradford County, Pennsylvania Natural Gas Exploration Advisory Committee. It's an attachment to this packet. Just wanted to introduce to them the opportunity to get, get in front of the shale gas industry and identify if we might need to stand up, identify a constituent advisory board that would address the full range of activities. I know the Environmental Advisory Board's already doing a fine job of looking at the environmental impacts. Don't know that any of the other boards in the county yet, other than perhaps the Department of Health, the Health Department, NHTSA Board has started looking at some of the impacts in that area. But we need to look at it across the full range to include the Economic Development Corporation, the Workforce Development Board and others of inputting into some central organization that would be able to synthesize all of the various issues and concerns and then present to this board, you know, those things which merit action on the part of this board, rather than us having to deal with each individual problem as a board of commissioners. A couple of the commissioners I've talked to from other counties that are, that are deeply involved in this business say that it's, it's an enormous undertaking and that you could quickly become a board of commissioners to deal solely with shale gas industry instead of dealing with, you know, with those items that really do merit your attention. So I was suggesting with this that we have, we start a discussion and then we look at, in another few weeks, that we come back and look at, at what we think that board should look like, if we, if we're going to stand one up, what it should look like, who would be the likely stakeholders that would need a seat at the table? And whether or not there ought to be subcommittees under the board to deal with those various and sundry items that come up through the industry. And it would look at everything from, from, you know, health issues to, you know, transportation issues, because there are going to be a number of road and bridge impacts on this thing. The stakeholders that are involved in ordinances and whether or not our UDO needs to be updated and modified. So there are a number of, a number of factors involved and some are municipal, so that the town of Broadway, city of Sanford. of Broadway, city of Sanford, needs to have input into that. But if we're going to deal with this as, you know, in a synergistic fashion so that we do things intelligently and economically, I think we need an advisory board like this that's dealing with that industry. And again, this isn't something we're creating out of scratch. There are some examples out there that other, that other states and counties have taken on and it seems to be working well for them, but I just thought we should, we should entertain doing the same thing here.
I think Chairman Reeves had a, had a good question.
Thank you, John.
The question that I had was is...
You're a good man.
You paid me out for it.
You're a good man, John.
Was there any thought about taking existing boards that we have under some of these items and taking members off of those and, you know, for consolidated effort rather than recreating a wheel?
Well, I wouldn't talk about reinventing the wheel. In fact, that's part of the discussion I think we need to have is, is how do we tie in the existing Environmental Affairs Board to this, this standing advisory committee so that, so that it's not about, all about the environment, it's, you know, it's about economic development, it's about workforce development, so we're tuning people's skills to be able to work in this industry locally. I mean, let's, let's take a holistic view and a comprehensive view at this, not just individual, individual parsed views and deal with them separately. I think there ought to be an advisory board that takes the existing standing boards and receives their input and deliberates those there.
Or, you know, sort of a coordinating body.
Right.
I thought that's what you had in mind, but it wasn't on the plane, so I wanted to three to one.
I'm hearing, it sounds like we need to have maybe the city of Sanford, town of Broadway, and this board sit down and talk about how we need to form this board or this committee.
Right, it'd be a county-level board, but we certainly want the city and the town of Broadway to input in what representation they want there. There may be municipal-specific issues and they may need a seat at the board just for that, for that purpose. But there are things like public relations, public education, those are all part of the Bradford County Comprehensive Board. And they, and there are issues that we don't normally address or don't have as standing advisory boards now that need to be factored into this thing. Because there are huge public relations issues when you bring the shale gas industry in here, you know, dealing with a lot of the rumor control and that sort of thing. And this becomes a very sensitive area and it needs to have a representation there on the board. So there's no preconceived notion of what the constituency would be, other than the fact that we need to go ahead and get started now anticipating it. And now, rather than three or four years from now, when we're drilling, because frankly, it's better to get in front of it now to deal with the issues that are coming to us today. Issues like were raised by the EAB, you know, with the Senate Energy Policy Committee a few weeks back. Those kinds of things need to be dealt with now in an organized and deliberate fashion here in the county before they, before they trickle up to higher levels and we're dealing with it after the fact.
I have a couple of comments, Madam Chairman. You know, unless you know something that most of us don't, it seems to me like, the first reaction I had to this is that it was sort of early on, perhaps premature, to get into this. We're not sure at this point exactly what's going to happen. In other words, there's a hearing to take place and a dean or report coming out and there's going to be a lot of pro and con about it. I probably, as you've said yourself, with the cost of gas, what it is right now, it could be five years to 10 years before this will happen. Now, that's not to say delay, but I had the concern, and I don't think I hear you saying that we're, we're sort of going to just ratchet right up to something like this, but that there needs to be some type of overarching coordination. I think that's what I hear you saying. I know this, that I think that it, we must be sensitive to our staff and to the type of coordination that would be required to do this. I think right now, you know, they're pretty overburdened, as far as I can tell. And I think we really have to be sensitive to that. Who, who runs this, who mans it, how, who staffs it and how something like this would work. And, and the other question is, you know, the Economic Affairs Board is doing a very commendable job, good people, pretty knowledgeable individuals. And I would hope that we would work with them and through them to make this happen. In other words, bring them to the table at the very beginning if, if the commission chooses to get into any of this and say, what do you think about this? And, and how can we work with you and how can you work with us? In fact, that was their question at this hearing, you'll recall, they said, what can we do to serve you better and the whole community? And I think the other part of this is Sanford. We just really must involve them in every way because, as you may recall, I was really impressed with a map that was shown to us at one of the meetings, that the heart of this gas is under Sanford, much of it. It's not so much out there on the perimeter, it's, it's right under...
Well, there is a parcel that it's in the city limits of Sanford.
Yeah, and, and so, you know, that begins to really draw fear and praise from, from city residents about what would, what implications would this have? I'm just saying that, you know...
I hear what you're saying, but you know, in the same conversation with the EAB, we ask them what we could do for them to help them.
Yes, absolutely.
And I think what we're trying to do is, you know, like I have a lot of questions and what I have is, is who's going to get all the funds? Where's all the money, you know, is the county going to get that?
Tax policy. You know, the tax policy is a big part of this.
Yeah, we got to have some kind of agreement there.
And how much is driven by the state? How much will we, will we be told? Are we just going to sort of...
Let me offer this observation, because I think, I agree with everything you just said. You know, the concern I have is that, is that I've already spent myself, an average of about five to 10 hours a week, working on this for the last several months, and it's getting more and more. I'm driving up tonight to Washington to go participate in a, in a, in a seminar at the NACO conference on hydraulic fracturing. You know, I'm going to go up there for an hour and a half seminar because we don't have anybody else that can do that. You know, I would think that, that at some point, we want the county to have a standing body of representatives whose sole focus is to, is to organize and coordinate all this activity so that, so the individual commissioners or the county manager or the tax office or the finance officer aren't having to deal with all these things on their own. You know, a comprehensive advisory board that can synthesize all these inputs and all these issues and present to us for decision-making purposes what we need to know and what we need to get involved in. That's what I'm trying to get to.
And you said again, and you know, you said this board, but what we're talking about is a joint board.
Right.
Yeah, what it seems like now is we've got several different committees and boards out there that are working, but we don't know how they're coordinating together. And that's what I'd like to see is, is a coordinated effort so that we're getting good information to make decisions on.
Like a clearinghouse.
Yeah.
Let me ask, and I don't know if we can do legally what we can do, but my greatest concern is at this point, the excitement behind it. There are going to be a lot of folks who don't realize the mental rights they have underneath them right now, and especially folks who own land for years and years and have aged. I, I'd like to know if we have, and I think Commissioner Hayden mentioned the map, I saw a map, I don't remember if in the paper or not, but it showed a green section almost like that running through Lee County, and it was at that Durham, Duke's here. I'm wondering if we can match up that area with GIS and the tax office and try and identify these folks.
That has been done.
Oh, wait, you have...
I don't have a copy of it myself, but it has been done by our GIS office. It has been done. I see Mr. Pridwell...
That's fine. We need to get it out to the public. We need to let folks know that there are going to be some, there are going to be some sleazy folks coming through, looking for ways to take advantage. And we ought to put them on notice early enough to say, we gave you what we could give you. The tax office can be involved, the GIS office.
There are nothing concerned there as to who owns the mineral rights.
Right.
And so I called the clerk, you know, to talk, to ask, you know, if the records were transferred out of Moore County and Chatham. And she said that they had been, except Moore County's courthouse had burned back way when, before my time, and that those records were not available. So, you know, there may be some people that, although most of that area is probably not considered, but...
That's an early, a preliminary problem we have now, a challenge that should be dealt with deliberately, and I think a standing body like this could then take that on as part of their charter to research this and come back to us. I think it's very, very useful to have a clearinghouse, to use your word, that can go take those problems and run with them.
I myself like this idea because, you know, different committees are narrowing their focus and their scope on what they're commissioned for. The Environmental Affairs Board, you know, is the environmental issues, but they're not into the economic issues, so, and there's public safety issues. So I like this idea and I think if other counties who have experienced the shale gas extraction, you know, we learn from what they have done and not try to reinvent the old system.
Is that one of the things that we'll, we'll want to discuss here in our budget session or later on or what?
I don't know, I don't know that there's a, there's a, there, there might be a very minor economic impact on our, our budget or our financial impact. I doubt it. I mean, we're looking at a standing body now that would just, that would just be a coordinated agency.
So how do you propose going about putting this together?
Well, I would just, I would just encourage the other commissioners, let's, let's, let's just informally deal with it now, because there's no pressing time issue that I'm aware of. Just, we've introduced the notion of doing it. Now let's gather everybody's inputs and, and if you've got some ideas, or if any of the current boards or commissions have, have inputs, they want to have into it, we do that. The town of Broadway, city of Sanford be invited to input to it, to help us formulate what our, our charter and organizational structure would be for this board. And then, and then, and then we, then we'll put together a straw man and then we'll, we'll deliberate it and vote it.
You and John will be going to that session in the morning, so you'll probably know some more from, if I'm telling that correctly.
Yes.
But I'd also like Commissioner Park's comment regarding, if nothing more than a token budget, some operating expenses. The manager and the finance director can probably take a look and see what is being able to put in play. Some of these things, we're going to have to spend some money to get information on and we have to go ahead and settle it.
Ms. Wallman, is that included?
Sure, that's it.
Okay. Okay. Lisa, are you going to give the manager's report?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh. Okay. Can we take five minutes here?
Okay.
Still there, Ed?
Yes, ma'am.
Our legal representative may need to rescind our motion under the air line and redo it, so...
Yes, let me explain what the situation is. As was verbally explained to you and put in the memorandum from Mr. Horland, I, the propositions to allow alcohol beverage sales can be done on a township basis or a countywide basis. It's not the same, because you could have one or all townships. Ms. Kimball gave us the information earlier about the cost of doing it, and that was precinct by precinct where an addition, excuse me, township by township where an additional ballot would have to be printed. She inquired of the attorney assigned to the State Board of Elections who didn't have time to confirm absolutely, but he thinks if it is done countywide, precinct, not township, that the propositions, whatever they are, can be placed on the same paper ballot, thus saving printing costs. I'm gonna allow her to, invite you to hear what the Board of Elections attorney said, but that's my understanding of it. So, if that is true, and the board is somewhat concerned with cost, it would be appropriate for a member of this board to move to rescind the motion that passed authorizing presentation to the Board of Elections for a township by township election on those two propositions. And in its place, so that we can confirm tomorrow, authorize a countywide election in the most inexpensive way possible, whether that be by township, or if it proves true that the ballots can be, can contain the propositions, then we do it countywide by precinct.
The concern I have is Mr. Thomas was asking for it township by township.
Yes, sir.
So, it would narrow the amount of people voting for, in that township.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's essentially what he was requesting, if I'm not...
I, that's the way I interpreted his request.
Yeah. So, would we need to change the vote if that's what he...
That's, that's his request, and it's simply a request. You can do with it as you wish. He does not need to be consulted.
Yeah, I, you know, being a citizen, I sort of go along, you know, I, you know, I don't deal with beer or liquor anyway, but I, I am in favor of the citizen asking for, you know, for a vote of the people. And I guess if he wants a vote of the people around his area rather than the whole county, seems to me like that's the way we should go. So, I don't know.
No, I'm just explaining that Ms. Kimball has additional information that may impact your decision, and if the board wanted to hear from her, she's available and can tell you exactly what she was told.
I think the question I would have, again, is if we vote on it countywide, and let's just say it fails countywide, but it passes into Cape Fear Township, does that allow him?
No.
No, that would fail.
So, he's looking for, yeah.
I'm sorry?
It would fail.
It would fail. So, I think what he was, I think what he was looking for is Cape Fear Township, but I'm not sure about that.
No, I, I'm certain it is. I've, well, he told you that.
And he'd be looking at Cape Fear, and the other couple will be looking at downtown Springfield.
Right.
And that was the concern I had, because you've got other folks who didn't come up and participate, who may have the same desire. So, what would be the fix for anyone outside the, the city limits who has a business and wants to do the same thing?
So, if you voted for a township, a township, though, and the township passed, and then they, they could go down and apply for a license, isn't that correct?
That's correct.
So, that would solve the problem, anyway. Is that the fix?
Well, what, what I was told by the, the council at the State Board was that it could be done on a county basis, and it would be done through the precincts and not by a township vote. And it would be, in, in that respect, it would be on our regular ballots, if we could put it into the ballot styles that we have, without having to add any.
But, but if the vote were in favor in precinct B2 and not in the other precincts, it would, because it was a countywide vote, it wouldn't, the, the precinct B2 wouldn't be allowed to have off, off posts or premises.
It would be county total.
Sales.
We, we can do it township by township, county by county.
Yes, absolutely.
And I think that's what they're looking for.
That's what the vote was.
That's what they're looking for.
I would, I would say we leave it standing.
All right, that was just information that you don't have to do anything. You made that motion, it's passed, and I'll fix your resolution.
We appreciate the, the effort you made to do that, though.
All right, what do you want?
I think you're okay with what you got.
I'm ready for the county managers' report.
Yes. I've left at each of your places the final report for the county and for the schools' evergreen audit reports, so you should have a copy of those. Dr. Ressio will be here on March 19th to do the formal presentation of both of those reports, but we received those March 1st, we wanted to make those, or received the county one March 1st and received the schools on Friday, which I guess was March 2nd, so we wanted to go ahead and make this available to you. Mr. Crump did ask that I remind you that we have our budget kickoff session on Thursday morning, starting at 8:30, with the budget simulation game called Bottom Line for the counties. We have several outside people coming in, and y'all seen that list, and they'll be here Monday morning, I mean, Thursday morning, ready to kick that off. And you have a copy of the agenda for that day at your spot also.
Lisa, the, the reports are out in the public. In other words, they are public documents now.
I have sent the school report to Dr. Moss this morning. We have not posted it on our website yet.
Do you have it soft copy?
Yes, soft copy.
Do we have it in, in electronic or...
Yes, sir. I have both reports in PDF version.
What size files are those?
They're at least two megabytes each.
So, they're, they're under 10 meg, so they could actually be, be shipped out through email attachment or whatever?
And we can try it. I have not tried sending it. Well, I did send it to Dr. Moss externally this morning, so it should, the school report I know will go, and the county one should go also, if that did. They were about the same size.
I would request that you forward to all the commissioners that have emails or use emails that you report, refer to them in soft copy.
All right. Time for commissioners' comments. Mr. Pascal, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, ma'am. I just wanted to say to the board that I do, and would appreciate their prayers and concerns for my speedy recovery. I thank you very much.
Ed.
Yes, sir.
This is Doc. We want to talk about Beulah Brown Road, don't we?
Uh, yeah, we're talking about it. I see.
Do you want to add any commissioner comment?
Yeah, I, I'll do that.
Okay.
I got a call from Commissioner Pascal, and he asked me to go down to Beulah Brown Road, and I think you've been down to Beulah Brown Road, haven't you? Look at this situation they have down there?
And we've had some citizens call in about them.
And Commissioner Pascal was talking to me about it, and we were just wondering if there's anything we can do.
Is this an enforcement issue?
Uh-huh. It's, uh...
The trash enforcement or what?
Right. It's trash. It's just trash and junk cars, and, I mean, if you haven't been down, I thought, I thought you got a call on Beulah Brown Road sometime.
Uh, mine was on Minter, Minter Road.
Well, this, this is off Minter Road.
Yeah, and...
In fact, it's, it's intersection of Minter Road and Beulah Brown. Is that the one?
Uh, yeah.
It intersects, yes.
And I know that Joe Cherry and some others went there, and the trash got taken care of, we closed down their cockfighting operation, it was right next to the people who had the main concerns, and so I don't know how to, you know, whether...
Madam Chair, may I respond to that? I, I've been following this and acquiring the information from both law enforcement side and code enforcement side, and I believe we can have success with a nuisance abatement action there. If we're talking about the same piece of property, and I, I forget the actual number of Beulah Brown Road, there was a small problem in that the person actually living on the property and producing the code violations was not the property owner. A relative of his owned it, and there allegedly was some verbal agreement to purchase. I'm still gathering information on that, but regardless, we can file, and I think be successful with a nuisance abatement action, and I'll follow up on that when I get all the data necessary on ownership, present status of ownership.
Okay, so that's a citation that can be issued, or...
Well, my understanding is there have been citations issued. I may be wrong on that.
No, you're right.
I, I think there have been, and they've just not been complied with, so this would be a civil action, a lawsuit filed, which would result in a court order directing compliance with code on a specific timetable, with the penalty being found in contempt of court if there was not compliance.
So, do we know where the owner of the property resides?
Yes.
So, can I get service on it?
Yes, we, we have that. It's just a matter of who does own it.
Tax records should tell you that.
Well, the tax records will tell us who owns it today, but apparently there was some, as I say, verbal agreement between these two relatives for the possessor to purchase, and some issue about whether he's complied with all of that, and the owner not really transferred title yet.
So, it's the title holder who's basically...
Yes, and...
Responsible.
My understanding is she's wearing the white hat in this, has tried to get compliance, but been unsuccessful. So, it's sort of a difficult thing to sue her, but that's what's got to be done, it has to be done.
So, you're working on that?
Yes, ma'am.
Ed, you heard that, didn't you?
Yeah, I heard.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Hayes? Commissioner Parks?
Yeah, I have one issue. This is one I agonized over for quite some time. It's something about the very fabric of our Christian country's way of life being attacked by an organization, administration, and court system that's vowed to destroy our American way of life by using our constitution and laws against us. This is happening locally with the use of prayer and our commissioners' meeting and the threat of lawsuit against us if we continue. The argument can be made to stand up for our rights, however, the Fourth Circuit Court has sided with the said organization, and Supreme Court's chosen not to do their duty to protect our First Amendment rights. I'm gonna prayer phase what my Bible says, in John 14:6, it says, "No one comes to the Father except through Me," and John 15:6 says, "The Father will give whatever you ask in My name." And each time I pray, it's for the wisdom to make the decisions for the best of our citizens. The Bible also tells me, though, that I need to obey the laws of the Lamb, and the law has been made, and until our Christian citizens are willing to band together and stand up for Christian rights, I'm obligated to obey that law. I was not elected to cause harm to the citizens of this county by incurring lawsuit because of my beliefs, and I do not want to be hypocritical by praying otherwise. So, my recommendation for thought for the board is that we possibly vote in the next board meeting that we go to a silent prayer so we can ask and feel confident God will answer our prayers without putting the county at risk.
Get rid of the ACLU to get rid of all this stuff, you know?
Well, maybe.
And the church that filed this worships the earth more than worship the Creator. I just had to add that, because I'm so upset about that. Commissioner, um, I think I've heard my say. Mr. Wobick?
Well, I'd, I'd like to respond to something that Commissioner Parks just mentioned. You know, I, I too find it regrettable that, that we're under attack, but, you know, he said something that's not correct, and that is that the law has not been made that says you cannot pray in the name of Jesus. That is not what the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals said. In fact, immediately after the Forsyth County case, I went back and researched it with the American Alliance Defense Fund, and they told me that is not what was in the court case. The only advice we've gotten that says, "Don't pray in the name of Jesus," or "Stop using His name in our prayers," was the advice we received from counsel here. But I went back and double-checked it again. I reread the Forsyth case, and I encourage all the commissioners to do that, to find out precisely what did the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals say, and just how far-reaching is it, and does it really apply to our prayer? The, the, the Chamber case of 19, I believe it was 1983, Marsh v. Chambers, the U.S. Supreme Court, which the last time I checked is still, you know, the ultimate body of interpretation of the constitutional law, said they will not parse the words of prayer. That's, that's their words, not mine. They said they were not gonna tell you what the words in your prayer needed to be in your invocation. Now, I understand the ACLU is putting that to test, and, but, you know, if we, if we allow, you know, interested public bodies or non, non-governmental bodies to come in and intimidate us from doing what we know to be right and in our heart to be a Christian philosophy, then, then we've allowed them to usurp the authority that we've given by the electorate. And I don't suggest that we should change anything, and certainly not put it to a vote here, until we've really verified the words, the precise words and the intent on the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals and what, and what Marsh v. Chambers says we should do. I don't think, I think it'd be very premature until we've verified ourselves and we know what we're voting on.
Let me just say this. When I went to the course up there at School of Government, that was one of the things the legal representatives said to us, is that it is now a case that the ACLU has already issued letters to the county, and I don't know if we got...
We have not.
That they were going to seek $20,000 from each county that continues to participate. So, we talked about the legalities, and I haven't seen any of that in writing, but I don't want to put our county in jeopardy until since time we can clarify that. That's what I'm saying.
And, and all I'm saying, Charlie, I, I'm with you there. I totally agree that we need to evaluate this very carefully and deliberately, but I certainly do not agree that we should put this to a vote to change our policy until and unless we verify we got a problem. Because otherwise, we're allowing, we're allowing the threat of possible action to intimidate us from doing what we want to do.
Can you do that for us, is, see if there is something out there in writing that would prevent us from doing that?
Yes, I'd like a little clarification on the assignment, though. I have been made aware that the ACLU has made those comments to other counties. If you want the assignment...
I just wondered, the way they put it to us there is that they had issued letters to all the counties that, that was their intent, was to file a suit. So, if we can clarify whether that was actually done or not, then maybe I'll back off of that. But, but at least I don't want to put the county in jeopardy by the, doing that, and I figured by doing a silent prayer, I'm still praying the way I want to, and they can't get me for that, so...
If I may add quickly, and I don't want to belabor the point, but there is a local government law blog that comes through the School of Government, and several months, let me say six to eight weeks ago, there was a couple, there were a couple of posts, one by the ACLU attorney who represented that agency in the lawsuit, and it did infer that the ACLU would be looking at counties that were violating the policy and talking about their court costs in the Forsyth County case. I can find that, and I can also talk to the School of Government staff to see if they have anything more detailed. And I can get that, that back probably by Thursday, when y'all meet again.
Okay, just, and I apologize for jumping off on the Charlie's issue. I have one that's a burning issue for me, and that is that, that for the first time in the history of this board of commissioners, as so far as I can tell from my research, you know, a, a request by a, a sitting commissioner to be, to be heard in a, in a board meeting was challenged off by the other commissioners, and I find that to be a little disturbing, and I hope that's not gonna be a precedent for the future, because I think the electorate put us on this board for a purpose, and, and being suppressed is not the, the will of the people. I would like to say, as part of my commissioners' comments, a synopsis of what I was hoping that we would discuss tonight, and that is the fact that I'm going on record at this point as saying I'm advocating this year for a two-cent property tax decrease on our citizens, and I intend to, to justify that using the evergreen audit and other, and other... and other evidence from our budget reviews last year that we can easily find two cents property tax decrease on our citizens this year, and I'm hoping to factor that into some advanced planning guidance for the county manager if we can, so that he's rolling that in to his preparations to present us a budget. And that I'm also asking that we do as part of that initiative a sales tax distribution change so that we move-- right now, there's two methods we can use, ad valorem and per capita, and the one that's most favorable to the county that we should be using this year. I'm going to publicly advocate that now, and I intend to have the staff do the necessary research. I believe Ms. Mentor's already run the numbers a couple of times for us. It seems to be evidence there that we can save the county taxpayers, which includes every citizen in Lee County, the county taxpayers upwards of $1.1 to $1.4 million per year by doing that redistribution or reevaluating the way we distribute those sales taxes. And I know there will be a lot of fight against doing that. And I just want to go on record as saying that I have-- I will-- I promise faithfully to those citizens that elected me to office that I was going to do this, and I'm now fulfilling that promise. I am going to-- I'm going to be dogged in my pursuit of trying to reduce the taxes on our taxpayers. I believe I heard Mr. Hugues say earlier tonight, "If we don't do anything," were his words, "if we don't do anything." And he was talking about economic development. Well, let me offer to you folks that the property tax rates in Lee County-- not counting inside the city of Sanford-- the property tax rates in Lee County are 75 cents on the 100. The next lowest property tax in the four or five-county area is Harnett County at 73 cents. If we reduce our property taxes from 75 to 73, we'll be at the next level. If we wanted to compete with Chatham County, who we heard a lot about today doing initiatives up there to attract industry, they're at 60 cents on the 100, and if we want to compete with Moore County, they're at 46 cents a 100. Now, I'm just telling you, if you want to do something about economic development and growth in this county, you're going to bring those property taxes down so companies will give us a second look. Right now, our property taxes are much too high, and we're going to have a very difficult time growing jobs in this county and attracting industry in here like we want, and high-paying jobs and people to live here if our taxes stay that high. And, you know, I'm very passionate about this, and I'm going to remain that way, even if I'm suppressed in my presentations at this board. Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves?
Give me a moment. Get serious.
I was serious.
I don't care about you being serious. Let me first say that we have an attorney regarding this religious matter. I'm going to wait until you advise, and each individual has the right to conduct themselves in whatever manner they choose, but I'll honor what you come back with. The second thing is I'd like to ask the appropriate staff to get something out about severe weather week or month or whatever it is. We took a big hit back in April. We were very lucky last year. We hope people will be more prepared this year. But you can't dictate what it's going to do. Regarding the Commissioner Omex comment, you know, I would first ask to come in and vote to remove it, and I rejected that. I then took steps to call the chair and made the request of her to ask if you would remove it until we get to budget or the next meeting. She reported back to me you didn't want to do that.
And he gave me good reasons.
His reasons to me are no better than mine are to him. The person that we hired to be responsible for budget process was not here. And that's the person I want to hear what any commissioner has to say about how we do business because he has a better feel for what might be right, what might be good for this board. None of the commissioners here-- and commissioners on board right now, to my knowledge, are county managers or have that kind of background experience. So when it comes to making these kinds of presentations, it's only fair and reasonable that the parties involved be present. Now, you can sit here and tell me all day it wasn't attack on the managers. You've done things time and time again to embarrass the staff. I know that, and you know that, and that's what it's about.
That is a complete misrepresentation.
That's what it is. It's all politics.
It's not politics.
If that's the way you want to go down this year, then fine. I'm ready. Whatever you want to do.
I just think it needs to be about the people's business. That's all I'm...
You think Thursday's too late to be about the people's business?
No, Thursday's agenda's been set. It didn't have this in the...
We changed them all. We changed this...
We certainly changed the one today, and I just...
We changed them all.
I just want you to know that I'm not expecting you to apologize for attacking me or not having the courage to come see me before the meeting to tell me you were going to do that. That's fine. That's fine. You know, if you want to deal with it behind the scenes, that's fine.
To do with-- to come to you, I don't owe you anything to come to you.
I was referring to doing things man-to-man, you know, like a man. I think those are your words, "like a man," to come to me and tell me that you don't want to pull this off.
This is an agenda item.
That's all right. It's fine.
And I went to the person responsible for this board.
Right, and you didn't...
The chair.
You've got my phone number. You call me whenever you have something you need, and, you know, that's fine.
You can bang together, but you got mine. You should have called me.
Let's move on with this. I think we know what... Did you have any additional comments other than that on another topic?
Thank you very much, Jan.
Charlie, how do your motion go?
Madam Chair, I move we go into closed session to consider a personnel matter for North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6.
Okay. Now, we're going to close session. You going to do it in there?